Good afternoon and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting on October 13, 2025. We're called to order at four o'clock PM. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the purposes as stated on the agenda? Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Benway. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll now go into closed session. Thank you. (Audio cuts out)
Is there a motion to return to open session? All right, do we have a second? All right, all in favor say aye. All right, we are called to order at 5:37, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I wish to remove two items from today's consent agenda. I would like to remove item 4D as in Delta and make that an action item. And I wish to remove the senior executive contract awards from the pending personnel report and have those moved to separate action items.
Okay, we'll move the network infrastructure down to board action as item D. And we'll move the senior executive team report to item E under board action. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Hensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimous. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Moore County Board of Education regular business meeting on, or excuse me, it's October 13th, 2025. We're at our pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite Principal Swafford to come up and introduce our guest.
Good evening, everybody. I want to introduce one of West Palm Middle's finest, Tessa Haig, who is here to do the pledge and moment of inspiration moment. She is a multi-sport athlete, participating in tennis, volleyball, basketball, and soccer. She also helps out our PE teachers in supporting our students in adaptive PE. She most definitely represents the Wildcat way.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I chose a quote by Maya Angelou that I would like to share with you today. If you're always trying to be normal, you will always know how amazing you can be. You will, sorry, you will never know how amazing you can be. I chose this quote because it really made me think. I know everyone tries to fit in, especially in middle school. Sometimes we all try to be like everyone else. We even all want the same leggings or shoes. We just don't really want to stand out. This quote reminds me though that it is better to just be yourself. Everyone has something unique about them that makes them amazing. They might miss that if they're trying to be like everyone else.
All right, good evening, everyone. Happy Columbus Day. Just one point that I'd like to make, and then for this past week, Pinecrest Choir Fall Concert, we had the pleasure, a few of us have attended, and First Bank dedicated a piano in honor of Ms. Sheila Criswell. She was the class of 1983, and just a precious lady that served our community well. I actually had the honor of working with her almost 20 something years ago, and everything that was said about her during that time of recognition of her life. She's passed away almost 18 months ago from cancer. But she was just a precious soul and thankful for First Bank recognizing her with the piano and the blessing that it will be for our choirs and concerts coming up soon. Just during our moment of silence, if we'll just remember her and her family and the memories that she shared with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair. First, could we have Tessa please join our board members, Board Vice Chair Davis and Board Member Hensley at the front? As a token of appreciation, we are presenting Tessa with a certificate for leading us in the pledge of allegiance and providing a wonderful inspiration to us all this evening. Congratulations. At this time, could we have our honorees from West End Elementary School? Please join our board members at the front. Mary Catherine Dahl is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed certified staff honoree for West End Elementary School. Ms. Dahl is being celebrated for her exceptional contributions to the West End Elementary community. She has established a classroom culture that both supports and empowers students to take ownership of their learning. Her commitment to student success is evident in her daily instruction, and she further strengthens the school as a leader on the guiding coalition and school improvement teams. Ms. Dahl consistently advocates for students' needs, shares her expertise with colleagues, and helps the entire school community grow. Thank you for being such an incredible teacher and a true leader. Teresa Kraus is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed support staff honoree for West End Elementary School. Ms. Kraus is recognized for her outstanding dedication and commitment to students at West End Elementary. Her strong work ethic and nurturing approach create a safe, supportive environment where all students can thrive. She never gives up on a child and is deeply committed to helping every student succeed, no matter She never gives up on a child and is deeply committed to helping every student succeed, no matter the challenges. Mrs. Kraus's compassion and persistence have made her an invaluable member of the school community, and her impact is felt both daily by students and staff. We are so lucky to have her as part of our team. Would family members and Principal Lockamy please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And next, if we could have our West Pond Elementary School honorees, please join our board members at the front. Taylor Murphy is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Certified Staff Honoree for West Pond Elementary School. Mrs. Murphy, teacher of the autism classroom at West Pond Elementary, provides students with academic support, social skill development, and behavioral strategies that promote lifelong success. She leads a team of five EC teacher assistants while mentoring two new EC resource teachers, modeling excellence and high expectations for her team. Mrs. Murphy is a tireless advocate for every child in the building and a trusted support for colleagues. Her professionalism, leadership, and unwavering dedication make her an extraordinary example of the very best in education. Robert Kennedy is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honoree for West Pond Elementary School. Mr. Kennedy serves as one of West Pond Elementary's full-time custodians, maintaining both the building and its thirteen point four-two acres of grounds with dedication and care. Known for his hard work, kindness, and positive attitude, he sets a strong example for others and is always ready to help. Mr. Kennedy willingly takes on difficult tasks and is admired for his calm and approachable nature. In addition to his custodial duties, he serves as a bus monitor for EC students, ensuring they are transported safely each day. Thank you for all you do for our West Pond family. Would family members and Principal Dr. O'Neil please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? At this time, if we could have honorees from West Pond Middle School, please join our board members at the front. Melissa Shepherd is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Certified Staff Honoree for West Pond Middle School. Mrs. Shepherd is an invaluable member of the West Pond Middle School, serving both as a leader on the MTSS team and as the Beginning Teacher Coordinator. She inspires students through her teaching and supports colleagues by offering guidance and encouragement. Her peers describe her as a teammate who brings joy and laughter, making each day brighter for those around her. Dedicated to fostering both academic and personal growth, Mrs. Shepherd's positive impact is deeply felt throughout the school community. Shelby Morgan is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honoree for West Pond Middle School. West Pond Middle proudly recognizes Shelby for her outstanding service as a teacher assistant in the self-contained classroom. She brings patience, dedication, and compassion to her work, ensuring students feel supported and capable. Shelby builds meaningful relationships, encourages student growth, and consistently models kindness for those around her. A true team player, she collaborates closely with teachers and staff, always ready to lend a hand. Her positive spirit enriches the entire school, and her commitment leaves a lasting impact. Would family members and Principal Dr. Swafford please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? At this time, would our student from Pinecrest please join board members at the front? Emmy is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Student Honoree from Pinecrest High School. A senior, Emmy serves as one of the drum majors for the Marching Patriots. A talented musician, she plays clarinet, piano, alto, and baritone, saxophone, meliphon, and flute. Hopefully, I said all those correctly. She recently led the band at both Pinecrest Band Fest and the West Johnston Compass Classic Marching Band Competition. Emmy values the sense of friendship and community fostered through the sense of, uh, sorry, fostered through band and also excels academically, maintaining a four-point-oh GPA unweighted, while taking AP and Sand Hills Community College courses. She plans to attend NC State University to pursue a degree in chemical engineering. Would family members and Principal McLean please stand as we recognize tonight's honoree? And that concludes the recognition portion. I'll hand it back over to you, Board Chair.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to our students and staff. You make a difference each and every day in Moore County schools. And at this time, we'll take a brief recess so you can say hello to each other, and we'll conclude in about five minutes. All right, I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting back into session. At this time, we're at item four, our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, we, as amended, yes ma'am. We have a motion by Dr. Dahl. Is there a second? All right, motion by Dr. Dahl, second by Mr. Benway. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, we're at item five, public address to the board. Do we have any speakers tonight, Ms. Davis?
We do. We have eleven speakers tonight, and I'm sure a few of you have been here before. But in case you haven't, just some ground rules. You'll see the timer is up here. Once you start speaking, Mr. Bachelor takes care of the time. If you'll just have your comments wrapped up within that three minutes. And I'll call three speakers at a time to come up and just kind of keep things rolling. So we have Lisa Moore, Eli Blake, and Hammond. I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. Bennett or Barrett, maybe? Thank you. And if we'll just keep things respectful as well, and the audience quiet as people are speaking out of respect. Ms. Moore, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I am Lisa Moore, and today I come to you as a Carthage resident, a veteran teacher, and the School Improvement Chair of Carthage Elementary School. We stand together as a staff of Carthage Elementary to share our thoughts with you on the land that Moore County School is seeking for the new school. When we spoke at the board meeting last year, our staff expressed strong support for moving our school to its current locate, to a new site. Many of those because of safety concerns. Our campus sits less than a half a mile from the Moore County Jail and courthouse. We also shared during public comment our safety concerns with an open campus and multiple buildings. The proposed new site, just under three miles away from our school now, offers a safer, more rural setting for our students. From the beginning, we anticipated the new school would be located outside the city limits, between our school and Sand Hills Farm Life as part of our commitment to help alleviate Sand Hills Farm Life from future overcrowding. Several Moore County schools are positioned beyond the city limits. Our schooled, um, our students do not come from just inside the city limits. They stretch roughly eight miles north to south and fifteen miles east to west. Because our students come from a wide area, about eighty-five percent of those are car riders, and fewer than one percent walk to school from their home. Many parents choose to park at Nancy Kaiser Park to walk their children to the building or meet them at the walk-up spot due to our heavy school traffic. A rural site would provide a safer traffic flow, more efficient bus routes, and a calming, welcoming environment for families. We must remember that this new school is a direct investment in the next generation, our future farmers, business owners, and community leaders. We want this new facility to reflect the very best of our community, our dedicated families and our hard work that makes Carthage a place we're proud to call home. By providing the very best for our children, we ensure that the young people stay here, grow up proud of where they came from, and continue to strengthen our town for years to come. We want to acknowledge and thank Moore County Schools for taking time during due diligence to thoroughly study the land. We appreciate the care being taken to ensure that the land is safe and suitable for our students and staff. Should Moore County Schools find the proposed site suitable after completing all due diligence, we stand united urging the board to move forward with the land purchase as planned and to prioritize a timely start to construction of the new school. For us, it's more than a construction project or a land to project or a land decision. It's a commitment to the future of our town and to the families of Carthage and Sand Hills Farm Life areas.
Remember, no comments from the audience, please, at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Blake.
Madam Chair. I mean, it's been, it's, it's been a longstanding board policy for after people speak, not policy, but custom, that, you know, you know, short applause or just expressions of support or free speech not, not to be condemned. It seems unreasonable to not expect any sort of short react. I'm not talking heckling, of course, which would be out of line, but, I mean, she was obviously speaking for a group of people. If those group of people want to do a short applause to show their support for or against, that's completely inappropriate, or that's completely appropriate. So, it's been a longstanding board practice to view those sort of things as free speech, not to be gavelled down.
Understand what you're saying, but we do want to have a respectful audience and environment, and we did ask for our audience members to be respectful.
Right, right.
And I considered that disrespectful.
Right, and, well, no.
So, at this time, I've understood your comments, and we'll move to our next speaker. Thanks, sir.
Just let me say this. I think the public understands, and we can trust the public to use their, their discretion on what's appropriate and what's not, and if they get out of line, then you can gavel them down, but short, short expressions of support or free speech not to be gavelled down. But I guess you're in charge, so we'll do it your way.
All right, we'll move to our next speaker.
Yes, Mr. Blake, you go right ahead, young man.
Hello, my name is Eli Blake. Six years ago, I was at a meeting like this with my sister and my mom. I was in my pajamas because I was only three and it was past my bedtime. I had a sign that said, "I need a new school." I was in preschool at Carthage Elementary. I am now a third grader and still know new school. Now people finally want to build a school, but they are arguing about where it is. If this continues, I will be in middle school by the time you even start. This is, this year in social studies, I learned about my county. I learned that Carthage, Whispering Pines, Seven Lakes, Robbins, Cameron, and many others are all a, are all a part of Moore County. We are one county, community. I thought that we were all part of the same team. All the teachers even have matching shirts. I don't care if I am right next to Carthage instead of in Carthage. I care that my friends and teachers have a school that is safe and that they can be proud of. It is what we deserve. I have seen the spot where they want to build the school. I think it's a great idea because there is a lot of room for recess and it will not be, be next to a prison, so it will be a lot safer. It only took us five minutes to drive there from the current school. That is not that far. So what's the big deal, people? I think people need to focus on what is actually important, and that's the kids like me and my classmates, and the kids that will go to Carthage in the future. We need a school in a safe place. Plus, my mom told me that other kids nearby are cra, other schools nearby are crowded, and some of them might come to the new Carthage ones it's built since it will be close by. That would be awesome. We could make new friends. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Haven Bennett. I live on the Vast Carthage Road, and I'm here tonight representing some of our concerned communities in that Vast Carthage-Joe Road area. So, I'd like for them to stand up also, all the ones that are representing the Vast Carthage Road. So, we got some standards to. I want to just talk tonight a little bit about the relocation of the Carthage Elementary School to the Vast Carthage Road outside of the town limits. We, this group here, we sent a letter to the board, and I brought a copy here in case you don't have it, just kind of outlining our concerns. I'd like to just touch on those basic concerns. I, I'm not the most professional person in the world, but I did a degree from Carthage Elementary and NC State Civil Engineering. So, the things that caught up my attention and our group's attention is the entrance and exit on Vast Carthage Road. It's, it's very limited. It's very, very tight. So, I think it needs to be carefully considered. The second is, there is potential for some soil contamination. I know that there were some underground storage tanks over there. I know that's a fact because I lived right across there when I was growing up, and I was there when we got, told we couldn't use the water anymore at our house. So, it's there. I think that the, that the leakage and, from the storage tanks has been investigated on the south side of the tanks, but I don't think towards the schoolhouse, it's ever been any investigation, and I think that needs to happen. It's not the VOCs, it's the lead, everyone. It's the lead that kills people, especially children. If you don't believe me, you can come to my, visit my land anytime. You can still smell the gasoline. Be glad to invite you out. The third thing that we was concerned about is, is there a cost-benefit analysis that's really carefully considered? All the costs of developing this school site, sewer, water, utilities, power. And lastly, it looks to me that this site conflicts with the county land use plan and its vision to keep the towns where the towns are and the country where the country is. Like to mention one last thing. I worked in private industry for years, forty years, and one thing that we always did when we were trying to develop a project was we, sometimes we'd push. We'd push too hard. We tried to find the answer, tried to make it happen. Sometimes it might not even been a good idea, but we pushed because we thought that was the thing to do. We had a very good leader over the years that, that always said one thing. Let's ask ourselves one more question. Does it make sense? And I ask each of you, please drive by this site, use your own common sense, all you board members, and decide if it makes sense to you. Look at that location. Look at the traffic. Look at the street. Thank you.
Let's try to remember our decorum, please.
Point of order, Madam Chair. You know, one tenet of, of the school board is we had to be, well, everything in Moore County Schools has to be viewpoint neutral, and you allowed the applause for the young man who spoke, and for some reason, you found that the subsequent applause for that gentleman was, was out of decorum. So, I would, I believe that the precedent was set when the, when the applause was allowed by the young man. Thank you.
All right, our next speakers, three, will be Victoria Riddle, Kelly Calcut, and Erin Honey.
Good evening, Moore County School Board. I also went to Carthage Elementary, many, many, many years ago. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of the proposed location for the new Carthage Elementary School. My family's Century Farm sits across from the proposed site. It's a farm that has been in continuous operation for well over a hundred years. Our land isn't just farmland. It's part of Moore County's identity. Generations of my family have worked that same soil, and it represents the very heritage this county was built on: hard work, stewardship, and respect for the land. In fact, our farm is featured on the cover of the new Moore County Land Use Plan, a document meant to guide thoughtful growth and protect the character of the place that we all love. That image was not chosen by accident. It symbolizes what makes Moore County special: its deep agriculture roots, open landscapes, and families who have devoted their lives to preserving them. If a school is built at the proposed site, that image, the symbol of Moore County, will be lost to development within a decade. Development pressure will spread far beyond the school campus. History has shown this pattern time and time again. Once farmland is surrounded by development, it becomes impossible to farm successfully, and those lands are gradually sold and lost forever. There's also a practical issue that this site is outside of the Carthage City Limits. Building a major public facility beyond the town's infrastructure means taxpayers will bear the cost of extending water, sewer, and roads. There are costs that the county will carry for many years to come. Cheaper land without infrastructure often, often ends up being more expensive than, than land inside of the city limits. This is already equipped with water and sewer. It is also important to remember that McDeeds Creek Elementary was built in two thousand and nineteen specifically to handle the overflow of Vast Elementary and Sand Hills Farm Life. Ironically, just five years later, we are hearing the exact same language being used to justify building a school in the middle of an agriculture district. It is outside the city limits and within one mile from Sand Hills Farm Life Campus. What is more concerning is that in the recent pilot article, Ms. Purvis failed to mention the significant residential growth already approved within the Carthage City Limits. There's seven approved developments totaling three hundred and thirty-five single-family homes that are waiting to be built. This number does not include the apartments on Highway twenty-two. Carthage is growing, and that growth deserves thoughtful planning and support within the town itself. We need to focus on accommodating these expansions where infrastructure already exists. This is not opposing education or progress. It's about where we choose to grow and what we choose to protect.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Kelly Herndon Calcut, a third-generation family member who lives on farmland started by my pop and Mimi Patterson. I am absolutely for a new elementary school, for a new Carthage Elementary School. My mom was a fourth-grade student when the current school was built, and she's here tonight. My comments are from the perspective of a mom of two Moore County school students. I am very active in our local Carthage community. I have talked to many parents in the last few weeks, from our Union Pines home football games, to trips to the grocery store, to a school fall festival, as well as Saturday morning Rise Up football games at the local middle schools in our county. Why are you taking away the hometown feel? I remember when McDeeds was built, and the whole reason for building McDeeds was to help with Vast Lakeview and Farm Life overflow. It is confusing to hear the same exact reason for this new school location to be focused outside of town. The elementary school location should be in the heart of where our town is. Overdevelopment is a key issue going on right now, and it's definitely the talk of our community. It makes no sense to build another school within a mile or two of another elementary school. I know for a fact, morning rush to school traffic will multiply congestions of parents going to another elementary school, to middle school, and the high school, not to mention the regular work traffic coming to Carthage. There will be no more Walking Your Child to School Day or walking to the school playground. Our locally-owned business owners have told me that they will be negatively impacted if a school is built out of town. As a neighbor of a century-old farm, there are many times throughout the year when chemicals are being sprayed on the farmland, and we can smell it even at our house. Tractors go up and down our road at all times. This is not a location to even hope for a school to be built on. Just in the past week, we've put out multiple petitions at local area businesses to ask the school board just to reconsider the location. I have hundreds of concerned citizens' names in my folder. This is not the location to hope for, for a school to be built on. We only have scratched the surface of getting signatures. The overall theme here is building a forever-new elementary school. Yes, it's needed, but please, let's do it in the right location. A location in town is better for the students, the parents, and our local businesses. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the Moore County School Board. My name is Erin Honey, and I live on Joel Road on a property that, that, that joins the thirty-two-acre tract being considered for the new Carthage Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective as both a landowner and a member of the community. Let me begin by saying that I fully support quality education for Moore County students. We all want safe, modern facilities that give our children every opportunity to succeed. My concern tonight is not about the need for the new school. It's about the location being proposed. This particular site is simply not appropriate for the new Carthage Elementary School. The area surrounding my property is predominantly farmland and forest. It's quiet. It's rural. It's deeply rooted into the character of this county. It's the kind of place people move to when they want space, privacy, and a connection to the land. My family and I built our home here intentionally to stay in keeping with that setting and to be good stewards of the land around us. If Carthage Elementary is built on the proposed site, that character will change overnight. A school brings significant infrastructure: wider roads, water and sewer extensions, and inevitably, residential development drawn to the new campus. Developers will market subdivisions based on the proximity to the school, and the farmland and forest that define this area now will be replaced by rooftops and cul-de-sacs. While the addition of the new school might increase my property value on paper, that's not why any of us chose to live here. None of my neighbors, nor I, want to lose the rural atmosphere that make this part of Moore County so special. We didn't move to this area for growth or proximity. We moved here for tranquility, for privacy, and a rural character that cannot be rebuilt once it's gone. There are other parcels in the county that already have access to infrastructure and that are better suited for future growth. Placing a school on the, on the tract proposed will create unnecessary costs, disrupt and establish rural community, and start a chain reaction of development that cannot be undone. I respectfully ask the board to take a hard look at the long-term consequences, not just traffic or construction, but for the identity of this portion of the county. Once farmland and forests are gone, they don't come back. Please consider alternative sites that align better with the growth and infrastructure plans, and allow this rural area to remain what it has always been: quiet, open, and true to Moore County's heritage. Thank you for your time and for your service to our schools and to our community.
All right, our next speakers, three speakers, will be John Mizieck, James Moore, and Dan Banillo.
Members, my name's John Mizieck. It was recently reported in the pilot that Moore County Public Schools ranked seventh in the entire state out of one hundred and fifteen districts in student performance. This despite the fact that district ranked sixth from the bottom in per pupil spending. Certainly credit to the kids, but even more credit is due to our teachers. Well done, teachers. In the face of this outstanding performance by Moore County teachers, it has to be noted that local county teachers' salary supplements fall significantly below that of nearby, nearby counties. For example, Cumberland County and Chatham Counties, where local teacher supplements range up to fifteen hundred dollars more per year per teacher. This despite the fact that neither of those counties is Tier Three County, as is Moore County. I hope you, Board of Education, will lobby our Board of Commissioners to allow you to increase local teachers' supplements in the next budget cycle. Our teachers deserve it. The district will benefit in the form of teacher retention and its ability to fill vacant positions. Another matter, the pilot also recently reported there are currently fifteen unfilled SRO positions. Despite student, student safety being of paramount importance, this isn't a new problem. The district's plan for having its own police force isn't and hasn't worked. It's past time to end, end this failed idea and partner with local law enforcement agencies to provide, in this day and age, needed school security. Thank you.
I'm James Moore. I really don't care where you build the schools. What I care about is that you protect them once you build them. Schools are going to be built where the pockets have been lined the most. We all know this. But I deal with criminals every day, and I can tell you guys that hiring unarmed security to protect to protect our children is not a route you wanna take. They have no arrest powers; they don't respect authority, the criminals I'm talking about. So all they respect is force. When they come to your schools with a weapon and an unarmed security guard is standing there, that's gonna be the first person that they step over before they enter your school and hurt our children. Now, we voted a lot of people in on this board that we thought would do the right thing, and for the last several voting cycles, we've been poorly disappointed. Just because we stopped coming to these meetings doesn't mean that we're not paying attention. That's why I'm here tonight; I haven't been to a meeting in two years, but I'm paying attention. This is a voting year. For those of you that vote in this unarmed security, we will vote you out, just so y'all understand that. And turn it over to the Sheriff's Department; give them the money that you're gonna give unarmed security. Do whatever you gotta do. Change the rules. Let teachers be armed. Let parents volunteer. Do whatever you gotta do. You have two armed police officers for this school board meeting. Don't our children deserve what you guys get? And it's not gonna work. Moore County has been lucky. We've never had to deal with what some of these other states have had to deal with. I would hope that y'all would like to know that if we ever do have to deal with that, you put somebody at the door of that school that tried their best and was armed with the best to protect the best, which is our children.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, I'm Dan Benillo; I'm one of the Carthage Commissioners. I am speaking in opposition to the movement of Carthage Elementary. I want to point out a few things here. We started out with attempting a government-to-government conversation. So the Town Board actually talked to the school board, and we said, "Hey, we want a new Carthage Elementary." We teamed up with Century, or with the Century Committee, and we approached you. So we admitted right off the bat, we need a new elementary school. And during those conversations, we said, "Hey, we wanna be part of this. We wanna discuss this stuff; we wanna be with you guys throughout this whole thing." At some point, that stopped. We told you, "Hey, our priority is that this be inside the town of Carthage." And it started about four years ago. It died, went for about a year, nothing. So we said, "Okay, things stall." And then we went back, and it started again. We said, "Hey, this is great." And then the school board said, "Hey, you need to figure out what to do with the old Carthage Elementary, and, you know, do you have a spot where we could build?" We said, "Okay, well, we're not sure right now." And you said, "All right, well, we're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna look around." And then nothing. There was silence. We heard nothing back as a town. I checked with our Town Manager; I checked with the Mayor; I checked with every Commissioner. The first time we heard that there was a spot picked out was from the Pilot Newspaper. That's how we found out where this was supposed to be. So we attempted to go government-to-government to talk, and then it just stopped, and you made your own decisions without discussing the people that actually motivated you to start this in the first place. That's a big concern; that's a problem we have. There are multiple other things here. I understand there's constraints; I understand you have to have closed discussions. I know that too, as a Commissioner; I understand. But to cut out the original party that brought you into this conversation, that's a big deal. There are some other issues right here. Carthage Elementary, just as was said before, is a focal point for our community. We, as the Town of Carthage, are absolutely willing to provide you as much support as possible. Again, there was silence, okay? So we can't support someone that doesn't talk to us, okay? We already provide water to this building; we provide water to New Century; we provide water to Union Pines. We have no problem; we really wanna help you guys out, and we would appreciate that being reciprocated. One of the things we have done is we have worked on walkability inside of the town of Carthage, and so our plan was that, hey, everyone can walk to school. We wanna walk to school. We've already seen the New Century and Union Pines; they don't do well with driving. Okay, this would be the same story. We have a lot of development; we want to have this in Carthage. That is our main goal; that was the priority that we put out.
Our next speaker will be Sherri Verderberg and Tracy White, and that will conclude tonight's speakers. The other name that I called was Tracy White.
I'm short. I've listened to all these people about the new school. I ain't even gonna go over all of that, but y'all just have to remember, we got an elementary school up there on Toxic Waste. You got this gentleman here telling us what's there. Well, I have a second one. And I've asked this, and I keep asking this: we need an air test done again at Aberdeen Elementary School. It's been years; still ain't got nothing done again. Safety. Safety for our children. Safety for the staff. Hiring unarmed security guards. Really? You got two here? I mean, think about it. We got children. I had a man up here speak on the behalf of Aberdeen Elementary School. He said, "It used to be a SOR." He said Aberdeen Elementary School, to start with, was not a safe environment because of all the glass. Safety of North Carolina schools. Still was built, but okay. Here's my thing: when do you know there's a threat? When they're there. It takes one second to pull the trigger. Takes how long to get an armed police officer to these schools? Why would you hire an unarmed security guard? It's probably gonna duck with the rest of 'em. They don't wanna die. I mean, really? Protect our staff and our students. And another thing is, I've been thinking, okay, what are y'all doing for the staff? Why come y'all can't do some kinda self-defense for these teachers to help control the environment when something happens? Have y'all thought about that? I mean, a lot of people don't know disarming someone. I'm not asking you to train 'em to disarm them; I'm asking you to help protect them. But my thing is, hiring unarmed security guards ain't gonna do nothing but run and hide and duck like everybody else, and hope that they don't get shot. Put these off, and what's stopping the SORs from getting hurt? I've already heard some stories. I'm not gonna go in those details, but you need to look at your protocols and quit stepping what the superintendent says. Y'all's the board; he works for you, not what he wants. Y'all's doing the same thing again as Grimsley. Think of our children and our staff. Bring in security guards. Find out why come we can't get SORs. That's our main thing: protection. And yeah, I see you looking at a clock. I got seventeen seconds, and I'm gonna use them seventeen seconds. Please. I got grandchildren. I got twenty-eight, one on the way. I got one great-grandchild. They all in Moore County School but five. I want protection for my grands.
I'm gonna assume that Ms. White is no longer here. Tracy White. Okay, that concludes the speakers for this evening.
Madam Chair, just a point of personal privilege; I'd just like to make a couple observations, if I could.
All right, yes, sir.
First of all, it's, you know, I've felt this frustration for five years. I've been on four and a half years; I've been on the board. It's very frustrating to sit here as a board member. When members of the public take time out of their schedule to come and speak, it's always appreciated, and it's very frustrating that, you know, we don't get to ask follow-on questions. You know, essentially, we're asked to sit here like bumps on a log. I wish this board would reconsider our approach to public speaking. There is no reason that we could not turn these into public hearings where board members could ask follow-on questions for clarification and whatnot, because there's a lot of wisdom, and there's a lot of really smart people in our community. And if we don't do it during public speaking, then what we ought to absolutely do is do like our county commissioners do, and when things come up on the action item for the agenda, you know, our county commissioners frequently open it up for a public hearing so that, you know, people can speak on the matter, why we're considering it, and then it's a two-way conversation, and it's much more productive. We could actually learn from each other. But for some reason, this school board, like many other school boards, just has to sit here like when there's obvious follow-on questions and clarification. So I would ask this board to consider that we have public hearings during action items, if not during the public speaking. The other thing is, it's very, very unnatural, I was gonna say the word creepy, but I changed it to unnatural, to expect a group of people who are here to support an issue to likewise sit there stone-faced quiet and not express support. Again, it's free speech, not, it's just creepy to require a group of people not to express their support with a short applause. Thank you.
We really appreciate, thank you. We really appreciate the time and effort that you took to come tonight and share your thoughts, and we're gonna take a five-minute recess at this time. And we're going to take a five-minute recess at this time.
All right, we're returning to session. Again, thank you very much. We are at Item 6, Reports, Information and Discussion. Update on replacement of Carthage Elementary School. I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I've asked Ms. Purvis to come tonight to bring an update as best possible based on where we currently are at this time and also share some background and context of how we got to where we are at this time on the replacement of Carthage Elementary School. We know there's been questions and concerns and we thought that would be a timely update to bring tonight to the board. So I'll turn it right over to Ms. Purvis to walk us through that information. Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
Thank you, sir. So yes, just to give a little update tonight and a bit of background about how we got to where we are. You'll remember it was determined that Carthage would need a new location because of their 7.6 acres. And when that was determined, instead of just looking solely at Carthage, we wanted to make sure we were taking the totality of the elementary population for Area 1 into consideration. So when we're talking about Area 1, you're talking about McDeed, Sandhills Farm Life, Vast Lakeview, Carthage, Cameron, and all of those elementary schools. So what we did was partnered with Ittri from NC State to take another look at Area 1 and say, tell us what we can expect in the future. Well, as you know, we are experiencing astronomical growth. And so what they discovered was that Vast Lakeview is expected to go out of capacity first. And one of the speakers shared that, you know, McDeed's was supposed to take that capacity. And I'm sure they're right because McDeed's was built for 800. However, McDeed's is currently sitting at over 670 with just McDeed students. But they also have daycare and they also house blended. So with that blended, they're now sitting at 740. So they are nearing that 800 capacity. So that's pre-Vast Lakeview and Sandhills Farm Life getting out of capacity. So, you know, I think there's been lots of growth since that preliminary study was done prior to McDeed's being built. There's been some growth. So when we learned that, we tried to take a look at, okay, if we're going to be really fiscally responsible, there are 310 students at Carthage Elementary right now. How can we build a new school for those students while at the same time being really responsible with taxpayer money? And instead of finishing Carthage Elementary and then in a few years asking for an addition at Vast Lakeview, how do we put that together? What that looks like or could look like, if you should choose to go that direction, is cascading enrollment. And that means that when Vast Lakeview reaches its capacity, we could move some students from Vast Lakeview to Sandhills Farm Life and push a few from Sandhills Farm Life to Carthage Elementary. That would negate the need to build on to Vast Lakeview. To give a little bit of background, Vast Lakeview and Sandhills Farm Life are currently built out to their core. Now, what that means is that they have the maximum number of brick-and-mortar classrooms that they can have per their core, their cafeteria, their media center, et cetera. If we add on classrooms to either of those campuses, we've also got to expand the core. So we can't just go in and tack on four or five classrooms to those buildings. We have to go in and expand the core, which is very expensive. If we were to do that today at Vast Lakeview, add a few classrooms and expand the core, you're looking at today's time $10 to $12 million. Yes, sir?
Ms. Purvis, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I don't understand, maybe you can explain it to me. If we build the new Carthage Elementary, I think we voted for a 600-seat school, correct?
Correct.
Was it 600 seats? Was that core built out or both? I just refreshed my memory.
Built out.
Okay, so both, both, right. So, you know, you're talking about overcrowding at Vast Lakeview and cascading this and this and that. Here's what I don't understand, and I think members of the public might have the same question. If we build a new 600-seat school in the location that we currently selected, and I supported that, by the way, full disclosure, I voted for that, as did everyone else on this board, by the way. Anyway, so here's my question. If we build a, you know, you're talking about capacity and how we do this and redistribute it and, you know, the NC State or whoever does this study. But I don't understand, if we build that school, 600-seat school at its current location, or we build it two miles west, how does that grossly affect anything that a school reassignment plan wouldn't fix? I mean, I was saying there's an appropriate site two or three miles away, but...
I think a two-mile difference is not what we're looking at here. The reason that we X-ed out or didn't choose other parcels was mainly because of topography and location. And I'll share that in a minute. So I think that, you're right.
Right, and I understand and the board understands all that. We understand the process. You got through, I just don't understand the argument of whether the school's here or it's five or six miles away. How in the world, without a little bit of school reassignment plan, that wouldn't be a moot issue?
I think the, and I'll get to that. I think the point is folks are concerned about spending $3 million on running a sewer force main.
Right.
And...
As I had that concern.
Yes. And the ability to pull Sandhills Farm Life and Vast children at the cost of a $3 million force main is a small cost compared to the site work we'd have to do on other places or compared to building on to Vast. And I think that's the point.
No, no, but see, here's my point, just to clarify. Look, I understand, because we discussed site development costs and, you know, the cost of the sewer, because I had grave reservations about that. But again, I don't understand how, I'm going to use a hand map, right? If we build a new Carthage Elementary here, and, but if we build it here, somehow we need to add on to Vast Lakeview. But if we build it here, then we don't have to add on to Vast Lakeview. What am I missing?
Either way, it's just a matter of how far students would travel. I mean, you can move it two miles. The current parcel was selected for topography and location. Wherever we put it, we would like to make it bigger, 600.
I understand that. I just don't understand how the location a few miles one way or the other affects. Okay, so that really isn't...
That's really my point.
Yeah, we should just, yeah, that's...
I would say, Mr. Hensley, that locating a new Carthage Elementary on the north side, going towards Northern Moore, that would impact potential student reassignment and the ability to do that in an effective, efficient way. So that is part of that. But two miles doesn't, doesn't...
Yeah, or five miles or whatever, right. And, you know, but again, whether it's 10 miles, it's just very hard to conceptualize how the location of the school is going to drive an expensive expansion of Vast Lakeview when a school reassignment plan would just take care of it. And, you know, quite frankly, we've students from West Southern Pines all the way 30 miles up the road to Cranes Creek, and no one seems to care about that.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hensley. Let's hold our questions, board members, if you don't mind, until she gets through with her presentation. But just write it down and we'll have time for that.
Well, Ms. Chair, this is, this is, this is, this was a, this was a question on the topic she was covering. So I don't understand why we're changing the rules.
Well, I would just, I want to hear the whole presentation and then have time for questions, sir.
Then you're welcome, you're welcome to do that. But I'm going to follow the longstanding board practice of during reports and discussions, we ask questions extemporaneous.
Not since I've been chair, but thank you for that reminder. And right now, Ms. Purvis, if you'll please finish your presentation.
I disagree. I can, we could pull up videos all day long where people ask during reports and discussions and for questions and clarifications.
I'm going to call you out of order, Mr. Hensley. Please, let's finish the presentation.
You can, you can gavel me out of order, but that doesn't make me wrong.
Well, it's not about being right or wrong. Right now, it's about etiquette and order of business. And right now, we need to hear the presentation.
You're changing the rules. This is the report and discussion portion.
Right now, it's about the presentation. Thank you.
No dissenting opinion.
All right, so going back to the point that this will be built for 600 so that we can, in the future, hold capacity. So it won't just hold students for Carthage Elementary, but in the future, other students from Vast Lakeview and Sandhills Farm Life. And the need to do that is because McDeed's is already nearing their threshold. They're already getting close to that threshold. We did take a look at lots of parcels in and around Carthage. So this parcel that the board is currently considering was only found after we did a search and looked at lots of others and couldn't really find one that's topography and road frontage was great. And then we had to kind of go to GIS to take a look at this one. So in question, I know there are, you know, there's a specific parcel being mentioned for sale at $2 million right across from the school. That parcel is there, it is 30 acres, but it has an 80-foot drop on that parcel. To give you a little bit of an idea of what that means, when my, before I was here, my predecessor helped build a school in 2019, Southern Pines Elementary, on the property that it is right now, there was a 70-foot drop on that property. That site cost, the work to do that site and get it ready, was $4 million in 2019. Fast forward, seven years later, we have an 80-foot drop. You're looking at millions of dollars going into site work. That adds up really quickly, and that's money that doesn't go into a school. That parcel does have some road frontage on Rockingham Street. They are correct. However, that road frontage on Rockingham Street is immediately turning off of MacNeil Street, and it's right in the curve. It is not enough road frontage for us to put school daily in and out. We could put a bus entrance. We could put our loading trucks in and out of there. Yes, sir.
It's hard to picture this in the abstract.
Mr. Hensley, remember, I asked you to hold questions to the end.
You haven't even heard what I said.
Uh, no, sir. I said, okay, we're going to have a recess, a five-minute recess. Thank you very much.
I was just sharing that I have, I did have those two parcels that we're going to be talking about. I had photos of those. I've got, they're going to have to load those on a jump drive. So I'll continue and then we'll come back if that's okay. Once Ms. Parker gets those and we can pull them up because we had to be able to get them pulled up here. But we will do that. So as we move forward, thinking about that topography and those locations, for that reason, we ruled parcels out. And I'll share a little more detail about that when we pull those up. Currently, the parcel we're zeroed in on is under contract. Now, we've had some misconceptions and we've had people say, oh, that means it's a done deal. Under contract does not mean it's a done deal. It means that we're in the process of completing due diligence. And due diligence is something that we want to make sure we do. The last thing we want to do is purchase land and then complete these tests just to find that, okay, wait, this is not a piece of land that's suitable for a school. So we want all of this completed before a final decision would be made. Currently, where are we in that process? Currently, the survey has been completed. The geotech is completed. When you think about geotech, what does that mean? That's for soil suitability. It's to take a look at rock bed that's underneath that might be extensive when we're looking at site work. So that has been completed. The title search is complete. The last piece that we are working on right now and that will take place this week is environmental testing. You've heard concern and we've heard concern about the Hall's Auto site that's there at the intersection, the former Hall's Auto mechanic shop at the intersection of Joel Road. We are skipping phase one. There are two phases to environmental testing. Phase one is kind of preliminary. Phase two is more invasive. Because of the concerns, we went straight to phase two. Phase two testing will be started this week. And that means that we will be pulling soil samples as well as water samples from the parcel and having them analyzed for suitability. Now, I will remind you that although we are testing water samples in this phase two, we will not be using well water. We will be on county water at that site. So, but we do want to make sure that it's tested and that it's environmentally clear before we move forward. I'll also note that the Department, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality issued in August of 2021, and you can find this, it's public record on the Department of Environmental Quality website for Hall's environment, their environmental study. They did a phase two study and in August of 21 issued a letter to the owner, a notice of no further action for that site after the remediation took place. But we still want to make sure that that is absolutely a place that we would want a school. So that will be completed. Just a few of the other concerns that have been brought forward, and I can give just a little bit of information to perhaps help answer some questions surrounding those concerns. Not enough road frontage. We consulted DOT. There are 721 feet of road frontage there on the property. Before we even considered this parcel, we called DOT and said, hey, can you just go out, take a preliminary look at this and let us know, would this be adequate for entrance and exit to a school? So we had that done before we ever moved forward with anything else. In all honesty, it is no wonder that our folks are truly concerned about traffic. If you take a look at any of our schools in Area One and you ride by there at entrance or exit, school traffic is backed up. That's at Vast Lakeview, at Farm Life, at Union Pines, at New Century, at Carthage. What we expect is what we know and what we see. And I understand that. But the last thing we want is to repeat that. So in terms of traffic, what would be the plan? The plan would be that this school would be located towards the back of the parcel. It is a deep parcel. We would locate it towards the back. We've already worked preliminarily with DOT to say, we don't want any cars on the road. We want only to be seen cars turning in and cars turning out. We don't want cars on the road. So what do we need to do? They will work with us to create a plan that snakes that queuing in front of the school since we have 30 acres so that we can get all school traffic off of the road. Currently, we don't have the ability to do that at New Century, at Farm Life, at Vast because all of those schools are close to the road. They just don't have the property in front of the school to allow us to do enough queuing to get cars off the road. But it is our intention to get those cars off of the road by positioning that back off of the highway and having lots of queuing. We've also had some concern about clear cutting of the trees. And, you know, we realize that this is a rural area. That there, it's a beautiful road and we want to maintain that. That was a concern of the owners. You know, what about the neighbors next door? Will they be right up on the school? Will they see it? The answer is no. There will be a buffer between any neighbor's property and a buffer between the highway and the school. You'll see a school sign. You'll see cars turning in and cars turning out. But our desire in the site development is that you're not seeing a clear cut, open school. That we nestle that school back in there and we maintain as much of the natural appeal of this land as possible. That's the desire. When we think about the distance to school, you've heard it's 2.8 miles from the current school. It is about one mile outside of the city limits. So, you know, by car, you're talking five minutes. By bus, you're talking seven minutes. So you had, you know, we've had some people say, what is this going to do to the bus ride? If you're a kid who's north of Carthage and you ride to Carthage this way, you will pass Carthage School on your bus and go to this site if this is the one that is selected. And that is an additional seven minutes on the bus. And again, you know, the concern about the $3 million, $3 million force main. And that is the cost of running that, thank you, sir. That is the cost of running that down Joel Road to the lift station that's here at Cox's. The good thing about that and speaking with Allen Smith with the town of Carthage, they have had some capacity issues with sewer. But this one has been updated. And so this lift station has been updated and we would feed into it, which is a good thing. And that $3 million, as I said, is a small price to be able to run sewer and serve students at that site. Knowing that we're still going to serve students somewhere else, pull them from somewhere else. Questions? If not, I'll take a look at the sites that were in question and have Mr. Bachel pull those up if you'd like me to do that first.
All right.
I have some questions.
Sorry, only questions from our board members and I am going to limit you to 10 minutes.
Well, my first question is what about the, what about the three ponds? So the first thing is, let me address your last point first where you made a big deal out of queuing and I certainly understand that. But, you know, it's got to be frustrating to sit out there. And this is why I advocate for public hearings because it has to be frustrating to sit out there and, you know, want to ask questions or make obvious responses and not able to do it. So I share your guys' pain. I mean, I really do. And again, I voted for this as did everyone else on the board. But your first point about queuing, again, it just seems like we're making the wrong arguments because, you know, part of their point is they don't want the traffic on the road at all, regardless of where it queues and how it queues. And the point that I would make, and again, I'm for this, but I'm definitely kind of reconsidering because there's better alternatives maybe. Is, you know, I heard the same thing about Southern Pines Elementary and snaking there. And there's fewer traffic messes bigger in the war, around here than Southern Pines Elementary. You know, you can queue all the traffic you want on, on the property, but you got to get it to and from. And I think that's the people's point. Just a couple of quick questions since I'm under a 10-minute limit. I mean, we're going to spend $35 million and we're arbitrarily limiting discussions to 10 minutes. It's ridiculous. So just to be clear, there's no penalty if we withdraw from this contract, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Purvis, there was earnest money?
There is due diligence, yes. $5,000 due diligence. You're right. I'll address, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and address, I'll forget. When you think about the traffic, you're correct. You're going to have to deal with traffic no matter where. The other parcels that were available though came out on, as I shared before, we'd be coming out on McNeil Street as the entrance and exit.
And it's difficult to see without maps. Plus, we're just kind of chewing into my 10-minute limit because, you know, so anyway.
We'll pull the maps up.
So one thing, one question, so one point that Dan from the county commissioners made this very good. We as a board have failed here because, you know, and this has been a complaint of mine since I've been on the school board. These elected boards, especially the school board, we're horrible about it. We delegate everything down to the staff and it's staff to staff. It should be elected official to elected official to elected official. Because they're the people, you know, we're the people that they vote into office, not the, not the professional staff. And we should go back and we should revisit this because what should happen is there should be a meeting between the school board and the Carthage commissioners. There should be a meeting between us and the county commissioners. We should, applause is free speech by the way. And we should, we should, we, the elected officials should have a meeting of the minds and we should decide the parameters and then let the staff do the research and report back to us. And then the elected officials make the strategic decisions and the staff execute. Unfortunately, with the school board, it's been the, it's been the tail wagging the dog for as long as I've been watching this school board. And that's a mistake that I let happen because I was chair of this committee and I should have, I should have known better. I should have seen that. By the way, I have the utmost respect for you and the process that you followed. I mean, I, I know, I know all the blood, sweat and tears that your team put into this because trust me, I was there, you know, discussing it here and there with you. But did you look at property owned by the town of Carthage in your search?
I'm not sure what's owned by the town of Carthage.
There's a 75-acre plot at the intersection of Vast Carthage Road and 15501. There's a water plant there. And it looks like it has some pretty challenging topology, but it looks like it kind of meets all the requirements. It's, you know, main arteries, this and that. I think that we need to discuss with the town of Carthage. Look, we're building this school for them and, you know, they could chip in. Like I said, the terrain may not fit, but they're only using a small part of that for their water plant. And I actually thought of this a couple of years ago. I just forgot to bring it up. You know, we should talk with the town of Carthage about if they have any parcels that are useful. I can't say whether it's useful or not. I do want to point out that, you know, again, one of my frustrations is we had a public hearing on this, what, three months ago, four months ago? It was a very tepid public hearing as public hearings go. But there were very, very few people showed up. I personally was for a course of action of building a 350-seat community school somewhere on the edge of outside of town along a major artery. Building that, moving the students, the existing students to that, then renovating the existing Carthage Elementary School. And then we would end up with two 350-seat schools that are community schools. But you know what? No one showed up to the public hearing to support that. So this board voted not to do that because the people who showed up for the public hearing were in support of a 600-seat school at a different location. That's who showed up to the meeting. And I'm just telling you guys the facts. And I advocated for something else, but the people didn't show up to support that. So I'll just throw that out there. It was published on our, it was, I mean, you were correct. It could have been, you know, there could have been ads in the pilot. There could have been radio ads. But it was, you know, the, the box was checked and it was, you know, a properly noticed meeting. Dan also brought up a good point. You know, I, I too have been concerned about water quality of, of, you know, Carthage and, you know, that we've had at Carthage Elementary. But, you know, the town of Carthage supplies water to Union Pines and there was another school. And the central office, of course, at the central office, they buy bottled water for people to drink that they don't bother to buy for the Carthage Elementary students, but that's another topic. So more, you know, the town of Carthage provides water to two other schools to include Union Pines with no complaints. I'm sorry, New Century. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that that's a valid argument. So also, it's my understanding that you visited quite a few people along the, along this road, correct?
I did not. I spoke with Mr. Bennett. He's the only person that I've visited.
Okay, I misunderstood that then. Yeah, that's all I have, I think, for this.
And I did that, sir, at the request of the family we're purchasing the parcel from.
Right. So again, I voted for this, but, you know, the people who spoke, and I'm generally, you know, I'm generally stay, you know, pretty stubborn, right? In case you haven't noticed. But I, I think that we need to revisit this because we may have made a mistake. And, but what really needs to happen is it needs to be elected official to elected official discussions. We come up with a concept and then we, then we give directions downward. Because we got to listen to the people.
All right, are there any other questions?
Yes, I have, I have a question. Jenny, when you talk about the, the topography and you're talking about
The drop of a lake.
The drop. Why can't you put a one-story, a two-story?
You can, but you still have to have extensive site work for stability and
Well, when you say extensive site work, are you saying that you have to?
You have to be bringing in dirt.
To make it even?
It wouldn't be totally even to make it buildable.
Okay, but you, you don't have anything against a two-story building, is, is that?
I don't have anything against that, but it was the desire of Carthage Elementary School's school improvement team and their school to have a one-story building, a one-story elementary school.
So, so that's really why you're not looking at that?
Well, no. If we're going to choose land that's most build effective without extensive site work cost, then you're going to look at topography that doesn't have lots of changes and lots of drops. The more we can minimize that, the less site work and the more money we can put in the school.
Okay. Yes, yeah, it does. But I, I really have to agree with David that if the community and the people do not want it at that site, I, I just cannot vote for that. I can't.
Okay, I do have a, I'm sorry. Okay, I do have a comment. First of all, thank you, Ms. Purvis and your team who have spent months looking for what you presented as the best site. If members of the audience would please remain quiet while we're having our meeting. We expect our children to be quiet in classroom whenever it's time to be. We expect it the same as you, even if you disagree. Respectfully, sir.
Just wondering why you called them all children, but that's just me.
I didn't call any, okay. So, the only argument that I would make against what Mr. Per, Mr., sorry, not Mr. Purvis, Mr. Hensley. We're building a school for the children of our county, not just for the children that are in the city limits of Carthage. So I appreciate the concern that you have, but I think that if you'll give us time and it, and this sale goes through and we build this school, it will be a blessing. And I also believe that there is so much bickering. There's so much bickering and so much argument about things that do not matter. We're talking about educating our children and building a safe place for them. And there's just, there's no place for
Excuse me, ma'am.
Ma'am.
You're out of order.
Ma'am, I'm saying that I am tired of all of the arguing and bickering. I have 10 minutes. Give me just a moment. Be kindly affection one to another with brotherly love, in honor preferring one another. Not, not slothful in business. Ms. Purvis has worked hard in this business. She's done her job. Serving the Lord, rejoicing in hope, patient in tribulation, continuing instant in prayer, distributing to the necessity of the saints, given to hospitality. Bless them which persecute you, bless and curse not. Rejoice with them that do rejoice and weep with them that weep. I'm bringing, I'm bringing, we have so much division in our nation, in our country. The least thing that we should be arguing about right now is where we're going to build this school for our children in Carthage Elementary. The little boy who was the second or third speaker said it as beautifully and innocently and, and as, as it could be. And it just disturbs me so much that we have 20 people, maybe a few hundred, that you went and you rallied your troops and you talked trash about the Moore County Board of Education and our lack of being able to make proper decisions. And it's just unnecessary. It's rude. It's unkind. And I'm excited to build this school in the future and maybe I've
Point, point of order, Madam Chair, the vice chair is sitting there insulting people, making unsubstantiated accusations. She said that they talked tr-
All right, thank you. I'll hold, I'll hold that. I'll hold your point of order. Thank you, sir.
No, she made it, she, she, she said that they were, that they were making accusations in the school board rude. I heard no one being rude.
She has the floor.
I heard no one, I'm raising a point of order.
Mr. Hensley, you're out of order.
She's out of order. She, she, she made, she made accusations against the public.
You're out of order.
She made comments.
Please stop and let Ms. Davis finish. I gave you your 10 minutes.
I'm not, I'm not the one that needs to be gavelled down. She does.
Mr. Hensley, you're out of order.
I didn't sit here and, I did not sit here and say that they were rude to the school board. No, ma'am, she's out of order and you're out of order for supporting her unacceptable behavior.
Ms. Davis, I'm sorry for that interruption. If you'll continue.
That's okay. I'm just
Please continue, your pencil.
My, my point is, as much as in you is, live peaceably with all men. And Jesus said, suffer the little children to come unto me. And I think he would be ashamed of anybody who would be against children, against a school being built. No matter where we decide to put a school, the neighbors are going to be upset. It's just, that's, that's what it's going to be. And we need, we need to recognize when we're fighting the wrong battles. That's all I'm going to say.
Are there other questions or comments, board members?
Yes, I have four minutes remaining.
Wait, some other folks might want to have something to say.
I do.
Mr. Benway.
Just as a general observation here, we have a vast communications problem here. We don't have, we do not have a disciplined process that steps us through a logical process, MDMP, deliberate planning. You understand that. And we need, we need to adopt a disciplined process for going through this so that we don't end up with these late, if you will, complaints and say, well, what about this? If we'd had a disciplined process, we would have covered these things and we would have validated the site based on the criteria that you and we establish. So I would suggest, and I, I know you're going to hate this. I would suggest we go back and, and start from step one, problem statement. What's the problem? Define that problem and then build courses of action to, to address those, that, that problem. And then in the process, we will cover all the bases and we'll have an auditable way of tracking how we make decisions. That sort of process does not exist in Moore County. Let's start it here. Otherwise, otherwise, we're going to be revisiting this again and again and again until I'm out of here. I'm out of here, let me steer by the way. But let's, let's get our heads together. We've got tremendous talent here. We've got tremendous interest, engagement, people who, who know what they want. Let's pull that together in a disciplined way and move on and get this done. That's all I have to say.
All right, Dr. Dahl, Mr. Johnson, and Comey.
Yes, so I appreciate all the comments. I certainly appreciate all the work that Ms. Purvis has done. The fact that she had to go to the GIS to find a site tells you a lot about the sites that were available. I've been in Moore County schools for a long time and we have needed a new Carthage Elementary School for a long time. Eli was very correct. That building has been needing to be, was it Eli? Okay, make sure I got it right. And when I ran for the board, that was a concern that was brought up immediately from many constituents across the entire county. We needed a new Carthage Elementary School. I tried to think this week of what it would look like if we were to try to cite, well, let me just say this, the calculus in Moore County has clearly changed in the last seven years. People are tired of development. They're tired of subdivisions. They're tired of growth. And I totally get that, having been here since 1998. But I would say that there is no place that you can cite a school in this county where there won't be significant pushback. It doesn't matter where you would put it. You can't build anything in Moore County without significant pushback. I tried to think about, imagine if today we were trying to cite the Southern Pines Elementary School where we put it. Imagine if today we tried to cite McDeeds Creek where it now is. Imagine today if we tried to put Aberdeen Elementary where it is. We would have significant pushback on all of those areas. And so I just think that's something to consider as we look at this site. I want to get it done fast. I want to get it done practically. I want to get it done safely with less traffic and a taxpayer at, at a good cost to the taxpayers. And I think you've done a good job of finding that site. And I appreciate all the comments about this land. I love this land myself. But a school to me is not a subdivision. A school to me is an enhancement to this community. And I understand the concerns of what that brings because that is a historical thing. But to me, I think it would bring value to this area. So that's my feeling.
I don't have anything as substantive as that to say about the location. But I do want to address the complaints about the process. The process may be imperfect in some ways, but this is part of the process. This presentation is part of the process. I think we could have arguments about whether we should have had a presentation at an earlier stage in our search. You know, certainly there's been articles in the pilot about the construction committee meetings and all the things we were considering. So now we've got to the point. We're not voting on the property tonight, so nobody has to panic. We're committed to the tune of $5,000 apparently, you know. So, you know, we're, we're just not at the edge of a precipice now. We have this opportunity to get some of the details out before the public and to hear before, hear from the public. This all seems to be part of a meaningful process to me. Even though there may be individuals here who might have ordered it differently, we're doing it now. And I would love to go forward with it. And, and even though I'm talking about the process, and this is ironic, have less focus on whether the process is right or not and get on with it.
All right, just a few comments. We have been following our typical process of building a new school. I've been here a long time myself with my mother being a teacher and me being a student and employee of Moore County Schools. This is my 42nd year in education. And it is a hard process to go through change. No matter what business we're in, whatever, you know, capacity you find yourself, change is hard. But I can say that we have done our due diligence. We're doing what's best for our communities in Moore County. We always put our children first when we make our decisions. We try to pick the best site for a school that's going to be a good fit for the children of Moore County. You know, we always struggle with making a decision that is not going to make somebody angry. It does hurt you when you hear that in the community. But I can say without a shadow of a doubt that we're doing the very best we can. We're working as a team. I appreciate all the comments and thoughts that you've shared tonight. We take them seriously. We want to do what's best for the children and it takes every single one of us. And sometimes, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy. I'm not sure what that outcome's going to be. It's up to the board right now. But I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, we followed the process. We've reached out to our commissioners. We've had public hearings. We've talked to our school people. We've talked to our parents and our PTA. We've talked to realtors. We've followed the law when it comes to selecting land and following processes. The state of North Carolina has boundaries for us. And then we have our own board policies. We have highly exemplary staff that are doing the work. I wouldn't know how to do it as a board member going out and try to find property. But we have staff that have walked this walk on many, many occasions. So I have full confidence in their work. I have full confidence in the decision- I have full confidence in the decisions of this board. And we are serving our public. We are here to serve you. But first of all, we're serving your children, our grandchildren, and our future children. So I promise you, we're gonna do the very best and we're gonna have as many people to the table as we can. We've had meetings with our Board of Commissioners. We need to have more meetings with our Board of Commissioners. We need to do this together. So I wanna share that with you from the bottom of my heart. We're doing the very best we can to make the best decision for our children and for our future children. So that's all I need to say at this point.
So, uh, thank you. So just, uh, in-
Three, three minutes.
In response to what you said, so, um, if we're gonna reconsider this, what's our next step? Are we reconsidering it or, um, anyway, I'll say that, cuz I don't wanna use my, uh, time. So Dr. Locklear, you were on the Land Use Plan Committee that developed the new land use. Is this school, proposed school site on a designated growth corridor from the land use plan that you set on the committee on? Is it a designated corridor?
It's, um, Zone RA, which allows-
I understand the current zoning. My question is, is it on, uh, uh, is it on an envisioned growth corridor that the, uh, Land Use, uh, Committee, the Plan Committee that you set on? Is this on a corridor?
I don't know the answer to that, sir.
Well, we need, we need to look at that. We need to look at the new land use plan. We need to look at the proposed growth corridors. I mean, that's why we have you on those committees, so that, you know, hopefully we get that feedback.
Yeah, the committee talked about growth corridors of, of, of the county helping to impact that through where they put, um, utilities. Where they put infrastructure.
Sure, but there's identified growth corridors.
One of those being water. Which water is a few yards away from where this school's gonna be.
Oh, we're running it two miles, I believe, we're running it.
One of the water sewer where we're gonna, we're gonna need to run. That's correct. But that is, uh, part of what the committee talked about.
So let's look in to see if this is on a designated growth corridor. I have zero doubt that Ms. Purvis and her team worked hard. That's not the issue. The issue is, did we make a mistake? And, you know, we're not infallible. For example, there's a seventy-five, as I pointed out, there's a seventy-five acre parcel right there at the intersection of fifteen five oh one and Ask Carthage Road. I'm not sure that, you know, we couldn't pinch off part of that. You know, I'm sure the town would be more than happy to work with us. And then we could just buy this property and, and, or have the county buy this property. We were looking at it, turn it into a park. I mean, there could be a win-win here if we listen to the people. Seventy-five acres right here, there's some challenging terrain. I'm not saying it's useful, but, are useful, but, you know, we'll say. The other thing that I'll say is, uh, the chair said that we reached out to commissioners, people, realtors, blah, 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 and talked about all this. But you know, one thing we never said to them was the location. Not once. So that's a, you know, it's, it's disingenuous to say, oh, we vetted this through everyone, but not one of, not a single one of those discussions with any of those people the chair mentioned, to include the county commissioners, dealt with location. It was, do you want, we're gonna build a six-hundred-seat school for a replacement. That's great. That is a, that was a nonsensical argument, because it was made everyone, it led everyone to believe that we had conversations about this site when we did not. The conversations were specifically a six-hundred-seat school in a location to be determined. But that's not what we're here to discuss tonight. What we're here to discuss tonight are the citizens' concern, uh, about this location. And we need to address this. And it can happen rapidly. No one's saying it's gonna drag out till the young man, who I gave a standing ovation to, by the way, is gonna, you know, be a grandfather. This can happen quickly. But the point is, we are not infallible. And to assume that we're infallible, that's why people don't like elected officials. Thank you.
Mr. Bachelor, three minutes for me, please. Were there any more? Any other board members wanting to say three? Any other? Okay. Just to remind everybody that we have reached out to our Board of Commissioners on multiple occasions since last June. We have had two-by-twos. And we've been, unfortunately, not been able to schedule a meeting. Um, we did have one on the books and then it was canceled. So we're continually trying to reach out to our Board of Commissioners. And just this past weekend, I did share the location with our commissioners. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. We also have been looking at different locations following protocols set by the state of North Carolina. So those are processes that are in place. And again, we, I just wanna reiterate that, you know, we're not finished with this process, like Dr. Dahl shared. We're just in the middle of it. Again, we appreciate your comments and your thoughts. We truly do. And I just want to reassure you that we are doing the very best we can. We have good people at the table that do this work on a regular basis. We need to build more schools. We're not gonna do it for a long time. Don't wanna say anything. Uh, it's not up to me. But, you know, what we're doing is doing the due diligence for the kids of, of Moore County Schools. So thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Ms. Purvis. Dr. Dr. Locklear? Okay. We are at item seven, Board Action. We have five topics for Board Action tonight. And we're gonna start with item A, the original budget, budget resolution for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Dr. Locklear, hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, uh, Ms. Evans will come up, uh, Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance. Last week, Ms. Evans reviewed the original budget resolution for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is built off the state's mini-budget that they did pass. And one thing we discussed at the meeting was the need, uh, if the state comes back and passes a full budget, we would need to go below the practice the board has had of having a two-million-dollar floor. Uh, the board had some discussion on that. And Ms. Evans and I did adjust that to go on not to one-million-dollar floor, but to a one-point-five-million-dollar floor on local fund balance. Uh, so with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any additional questions, but this, this does come with, um, our recommendation, or my recommendation for approval.
All right, considering this, the superintendent recommends that the school board consider a motion to approve the original budget resolution for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and reduce the required minimum fund balance from two million to one-point-five million. Do we have a motion?
Uh, before we go into the motion, Madam Chair, I'd like, I'd like for Ms. Evans or someone to give this quickly, go through this presentation.
Okay, let's have our motion. All right, motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Dr. Dahl. All right, is there any discussion? And we'll get your question from Ms. Evans.
Yes, I would just like, uh, for Ms. Evans to just quickly go through the slides of the presentation, cuz obviously there's many people here who weren't at the work session. Have no idea what we're voting on.
Well, we did have a work session recently and, uh, the slides were reviewed. And at this time, if you'll just talk about what's on the topic of reducing the required minimum fund balance.
Well, Madam Chair, that's not what I requested. What I requested was that she just quickly go through the slides, because I understand that this was in the work session, but, uh, by show of hands, how many people here were at the work session?
They can watch it on video. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, do we have, you have any suggestions here? How many slides are there? We've had-
It's, it's up to, it's up to the board what they wanna do. If you've already had the full presentation at the work session, that's one of the reasons you have a work session.
Right. You were, you were at the work session with you, Mr. Hensley.
I make a motion that we, uh, that, uh, Ms. Evans gives the slide presentation in the name of transparency, so the people in the, uh, audience who I respect and will not insult, by the way-
I'll second that motion, so we can discuss it and decide what to do and move on.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Evans, please proceed.
Can we go? Do you want me to start at this slide or go to right here?
Ms. Evans, would you just, just quickly go through it? Since you did it in detail last week, if you just do a real quick review of each slide, I'd appreciate it.
So, um, the governor did sign the mini-budgets, especially all twenty-five, eighty-nine, um, House Bill one twenty-five. They authorized benefit changes, um, twenty-four point six, seven percent. And then employer contributions to eighty-five hundred per person, that's the employer match, salary schedules, for teachers, instructional support, assistant principals. They did authorize for LEAs to move the teacher, anyone associated with that teacher's salary schedule up one step. And so step increases were implemented based on the General Assembly's authorization of moving, moving individuals up to the next step on the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher salary. No additional funds were provided to cover that cost, which did make this an unfunded mandate. For classified employees, no legislated increases have been provided for classified employees. And the State Board of Education made no changes to the salary ranges of those personnel. However, this legislation does not apply to locally developed salary schedules, which Moore County Schools have, that are based on years of experience and not legislated. Therefore, step increases were implemented based on the board-approved preliminary budget. So with our board-approved original projected fund balance, we had total fixed costs of eight, it was projecting a two percent, certified two percent classified, um, increase along with a two percent, a one percent retirement rate increase and three hundred dollars per person for health insurance contribution rate increases. That total was eight hundred and thirty thousand. Our local supplement step increases for certified staff, um, were two hundred and fifty thousand. All other projec- projected fixed cost increases with that five percent inflation rate was three hundred and fifty thousand. Projected charter school growth is two hundred and forty thousand. And, uh, the fund balance appropriated for twenty-four, twenty-five recurring costs was two million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty. We did have budget efficiencies and expansion budget of four hundred and eighty thousand, which made our total fixed costs four million, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Then for our updated projected fund balance appropriation with that new, that mini-budget, with zero percent increase for salaries, but the step increase, that increase for fixed costs associated with those salaries were two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. The local supplement step increase was sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. We're on the next slide, sorry. And all other projected fixed costs, the five percent inflation rate, we did not appropriate that. We're holding off until we see the entire state budget to see what those salary increases are. And then projected charter school growth, we knew that that would be two hundred and forty thousand, because we've been seeing the, the numbers. And then the projected fund balance appropriation for twenty-four, twenty-five was two million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Budget efficiencies ended up being only two hundred and seventy-two thousand, making our total fixed cost three million, one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Actual county appropriation was one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And fund balance appropriation is one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. So then the next slide shows the difference of what the board approved versus what the state mini-budgets, um, calculated to be. For the fixed costs with salaries, the difference was six hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The local supplement increase was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. That, we were holding off on the all other increases of the five percent inflation rate of three hundred and fifty thousand. And the budget efficiencies difference was two hundred and seven thousand. We actually received a hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five additional dollars over what we had anticipated from the county. And fund balance appropriation is a million, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and nine, um, less. The total budget revenues total, our total fixed cost of nine hundred, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. This does represent the remaining portion of the board's approved appropriated fund balance for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And this amount will be utilized once a state budget with an approved salary increases have been passed. So then when you look at our next slide for the projected fund balance in Fund Two, we had our, um, we had anticipated five million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars is our projected fund balance for June thirtieth, with a projected fund balance appropriation of two million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, making our projected unassigned fund balance, um, two million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Actual fund balance for June thirtieth came in at four million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars. Actual fund balance appropriation is one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. And actual fund balance assigned for inventories is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars, making our actual unassigned fund balance two million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then, uh, the current state-approved mini-budget does not include the raises. A two percent or greater raise would lower the unassigned fund balance below the board's practice of requiring a two-million floor. So we do recommend adjusting this practice to one-point-five million to cover, um, down from the two, two million dollars.
Again, that does come with my recommendation for the board's approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. At the work session, I just thought that this was the wrong road to go down, to, to dig into our savings. And, um, because I thought that our savings were for emergencies. And Tim, you said, well, we have Fund Eight for emergencies. So why are we not taking the money out of Fund Eight for this? Why are we using our savings?
Our local fund balance is part of balancing our local Fund Two budget. And so that's why we appropriate local fund balance to balance that budget. Unfortunately, we've had to do that for several budget cycles, uh, and have not spent all that appropriated fund balance, so we've been able to reinvest them. We do have targeted areas where we use Fund Eight. My point was, if there was an emergency, we do have some funds in Fund Eight that could support that with one-time costs. That was the point I was trying to make, yes, ma'am.
But isn't that what Fund Eight is for?
It's what's called restricted revenue, which we get from reimbursement from grants and things of that nature. We've, we've accrued that over time, so we do have some fund balance there in Fund Eight to help in the situation. You're correct. If we had a situation, we do have some funds there. There are some costs that we budget out of Fund Eight as well, uh, that we've done, been done over time. But there are some funds there, yes, that we could use, uh, in an emergency. However, when we're building our budget, we, when we're talking about Fund Two local cost, that's why, uh, we're talking specifically about Fund Two. And Tina, you probably could speak to that, perhaps, a little better than I can. But when we put our budget together and we're looking at operational budget, we're, we're putting majority of that operational budget out of Fund Two. Uh, and, and we try to, we have to have a, a balanced budget, which is why we had to appropriate fund balance. And we're anticipating if the state comes back with a full budget with pay raises, that would push us below the practice of having a two-million-dollar floor for appropriated fund balance.
So how do you propose to put this half a million dollars back in?
Well, it depends on whether or not we spend it. Um, we, we've appropriated fund balance for several years. Uh, we have spent part of that appropriated fund balance at times, and some years we have not. And that's allowed us to keep our fund balance over time above that floor. But we each year appropriated to balance the budget. If we spend it, the only way we build it back up is through reducing, um, reducing our budget costs or finding additional revenue or getting additional revenue.
I don't think either one of those is going to happen.
Well, in the development of our budget for next year, we're, we're gonna have to look at reducing costs and what would that look like? Um, and, and if we do have to go down that road, those are some very tough decisions.
I, I just think that this is going down the wrong road. Okay.
But just wanna remind, this is, voting for a budget that's balanced, it doesn't mean that you're necessarily gonna spend that appropriated fund balance. And, um, Ms. Evans does a great job of monitoring that and reporting that out to the board on a regular basis, so you know what we're projecting we're gonna spend and how much will be left in fund balance. So we'll be monitoring that and continue to monitor that throughout the year.
Mr. Benway?
Just to clarify, next year, we go back to a two-million-dollar floor, is that correct?
The board certainly could do that, yes, sir.
So this is not a permanent fixture? At least, that's not the intent, right?
Well, that's what you would hope, yes, sir, that we would not be below, we'd be able to, in future years, not have to do that. That is correct.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments. Better start the timer, cuz I got a few questions. So, um, just for clarification, this is, we're amending the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, is that correct?
This is the original budget resolution.
For this academic year?
Yes.
Right? Normally, there's a chart, maybe it was done in preliminary work, that shows the previous budgets and the growth of enrollment, right? But I don't see that chart in this presentation. That's actually what I was looking for and hoping to see. But what was, what was the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget? I have down, I just have a, I keep a spreadsheet, of course. I, I had it down as a hundred and sixty-six million.
Uh, this, this budget res- resolution reflects an increase of one million, forty-four thousand, five hundred and seven dollars.
I understand what this says, but my records show that the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget was one sixty-six. Not, uh, a million less.
Now, that might have been the beginning budget, but we had budget amendments throughout the year. So I'd have to look at what you're looking at. I mean, without looking at what you're looking at-
I mean, without looking at what you're looking at.
Yeah, so do you know what the final, do you know what the final budget was for 2425?
The final budget?
Yeah, what the final total spend was for 2425.
I don't have that in front of me if you would have given me a question about that ahead of time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was traveling for business.
We did use 685,404 in fund balance.
I just, you know, everybody's always focused on fund balance, fund balance, but what's never addressed is the growth of the budget over time versus the growth of enrollment. And that is what, you know, decision makers need to see. And then also, rather than focus on the delta, you know, where it's like mushrooms, you know, we're kind of kept in the dark as to where the money's going because what I've seen is, I've seen fairly static enrollment, you know, over the, over the previous decade, enrollment for Moore County schools has gone up like a total of 200 students. It might have gone up a bit the last year or so, but anyway, 100, 200 students. I've seen a, you know, salary increases are woefully inadequate from the general assembly. You know, we can talk about how many people we need and whether we need so many administrators and educrats and whatnot, but as long as you're going to have them, the legislature should make them whole for inflation. So, you know, it's unfortunate that general assembly is not keeping our, our public employees whole with inflation because even though, you know, I would, I would say we could cut a few here and there, you know, you got to take care of the people you have. But my point is, what I've seen in spending is I've seen basically a, a static enrollment because, you know, people have options. I've seen not big pay increases, you know, 1% or 2% a year, which is horrible. But then, can I finish my sentence? But then what I see is I see over that same time period where there's like, you know, maybe, you know, I see a 50% increase in school funding that does this where everything else is doing this and I just want to know where the money goes. I don't care how much is left over. I want to know where all this money's being spent because we're not spending it on people.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand, please. All those in favor of the motion to approve the original budget resolution for 2025-2026 and reduce the required minimum fund balance from 2 million to 1.5 million. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Four, okay, five, five. Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-2. We're at item B, 95% group intervention materials to support core instruction. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, last week, Mr. Waters and Ms. Sinan presented this item along with Ms. Gebhardt. This is for intervention materials to support core instruction, specifically targeted to certainly support EC students but those preventing students to become EC as well that need those services. So this does come with my recommendation and certainly happy to answer any questions.
All right, is there a motion that the board consider the purchase of 95% group intervention materials? Is there a motion? Dr. Dahl, is there a second? Second, Mr. Benway, is there any discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion. Oh, yes ma'am, did you raise your hand? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't raise it very much, like that much.
I didn't see it, sorry.
A little too subtle, I guess. I have, I just want to say that I've, I've put a little effort into understanding what this is about. You know, one of our goals on our strategic plan is to improve literacy and we have discussed somewhat, you know, where are the problems? And I think one of the problems that, that has come up is, is the students who get a little bit behind early on and, you know, then they could, if not targeted, they could continue to be behind. And then as they go on in school, that lack of reading ability kind of snowballs because there's just more and more that depends on being able to read. And so here we have a, a program which is, there's quite a bit of research backing it up that in its effectiveness to identify and remediate those kids who are just beginning to fall behind. And also, as I understand it, prevent kids from, are we possibly potentially preventing people from needing special services?
Yes.
And, you know, that connects to a whole lot of issues and, and is a very important goal. So I, I think this is wonderful and I have enjoyed learning about it and I want to thank Ms. Gebhardt for responding to my inquiries.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor to approve the purchase of 95% group intervention materials, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. We're at item C, North Carolina Protection Group Security Personnel Contract. This did come with a recommendation from the Temporary Safety Committee. So do we have a motion? Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, we need a, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair. I make, I make a motion that for the, for this discussion due to the importance, I make a motion that we suspend the rules, I, I'm sorry, I make a motion that we suspend the enforcement of the Roberts Rule 10-minute limit on debate on this topic.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the debate on this topic.
No, 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 I, I'm not making a motion to suspend the debate. I'm making a motion to suspend the Roberts Rule 10-minute rules that you enforce on this topic, i.e. to allow debate to go beyond 10 minutes per member.
All right, you heard the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, here's my discussion. This is an extraordinarily important topic and...
Yeah, the discussion is for the motion.
I, right, I under, I understand that.
She was just clarifying.
Yeah. I, I think maybe I understand that. This is a very important topic that for some reason both you and the previous chair have limited discussion. I mean, you know, I called, I called a special call meeting to discuss social security and that was canceled. This was on the agenda last month and you were unilaterally removed it. So there's this trend not to want to discuss this in public and we are a deliberative body. We are elected by the people to public, publicly discuss and debate and have deliberations on this and then we make a decision. Again, this is a very important topic. I have some severe, I have some, I have some very serious concerns about this. I have, I have concerns about it from a contracting standpoint and views of impropriety. I have, I have questions about it as far as the requirements in the contract, they're not stringent enough. I have requirements as to whether it actually provides any security at all. I have questions as to whether it's opening the, the district up for additional liability. I have significant questions about this that should be publicly discussed, they should be publicly addressed, they should be publicly discussed because the public deserves to be able to hear what we think about this, not just roteley rubber stamp that the superintendent recommends, so I got to raise my hand and vote for it. That's not what these people elected for and we owe them to have honest and open discussion and debates on this. Therefore, I'm calling on my fellow board members to do the right thing, let's be a deliberative body and, you know, look, if Ms. Dahl or Mr. Benway or anyone here has an hour's worth of questions on this, I will take an hour of my time and I got a flight that leaves at 4:30 in the morning. So that's what these people elected us to do.
The motion, the motion to limit or extend debate is not debatable and it requires a two-thirds vote of the members present.
Okay, so there's no need for discussion on this. So we just, we need to vote?
Right.
All right.
So you need five votes to pass this.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as proposed by Mr. Hinsley to suspend the 10-minute debate, let me read, let me make sure I'm saying this correctly. All those that are in favor of Mr. Hinsley's proposal, say aye.
Aye.
All right, raise your hands, please. Okay, all those opposed, say aye. Aye. Four, three.
That's very unfortunate.
Sorry, three, four. I'm so used to saying that. So it fails. All right, thank you very much. So, Dr. Locklear, is there anything that we need to add at this point?
I just want to reiterate my recommendation on this and be very clear about what I'm recommending and why I made the recommendation after research into this idea. To me, this is not a, a either/or proposition that we hire security officers and not hire armed police. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So again, this is not an either/or proposition for me. This, this is an and position, proposition, which what I mean by that, this is not about we hire armed security as an additional layer of, excuse me, unarmed security as additional layer of security at our schools and not hire an armed police officer. My recommendation is based on, this is an opportunity for us to bring a full-time security officer into schools that don't currently have full-time armed police coverage. Their sole responsibility and job as a security officer is to patrol the campus, ensure the campus is secure, to make sure, you know, that there's nobody on that campus that shouldn't be on that campus. Those security officers would also have the advantage of having our alert badging system from strategics to notify and lock down the campus if they needed to. And that additional layer of security could potentially save seconds in a crisis situation. However, it does not mean that I don't passionately want to have an armed police force in every one of our schools. I certainly do want that to happen. I believe that represents the will of our board and we would current, continue to work towards doing that. And so the other piece about this contract that I think is worth noting, part of the reason I think it, it makes sense is it, it has the flexibility that if we're able to bring on additional armed police, we can eliminate the need for a security officer with a 20-day notice. So it has the flexibility of us saying to this company, we no longer need this security officer because we've hired an armed police officer and so we can back out of that need in, with a 20-day notice. We can back out of the entire contract with 20-day notice if it isn't something that we see is serving the need or the need that we thought it would serve by adding an additional layer of security. So again, for me, this is a, I like to call it the genius of and versus the tyranny of or. The genius, genius of and that we, we're gonna, could do both. We could add an additional security layer and at the same time continue to work to bring additional armed police on, into our workforce. We're fortunate to have our Moore County Schools Police. I'm grateful for their expertise, grateful for their high level of training that they bring and we are going to continue to work hard to hire more to add to our police force. So that's where my recommendation comes from. So thank you.
All right, do we have any discussion?
No, I have.
All right, Ms. Bruna.
First of all, I hear additional layer of security. I don't understand what this additional layer of security is. All you're doing is hiring people to be hall monitors. That's all they're going to be. If, when the company was here doing their, their presentation to us, he said it's all about relationships. What kind of a relationship do you have with, 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 with an active armed shooter? That made absolutely no sense to me. You're hiring people to stand in a hallway, to stand at an entrance, at an exit? What are they going to do? They're going to hit the floor just as fast as everybody else in that school does. This to me is an enormous waste of money. I, I just don't get this. You have, first of all, active, active attackers are always looking for the weakest point. What's your weakest point? It's somebody who's not armed. The second thing is somebody who's armed can confront an attacker or a threat in seconds, minimizing, minimizing casualties, but there's a rapid on-site response. What are these people going to do? They're going to ring the bell too, just like any teacher or ring, I don't mean a bell, I mean ring, yes, what, whatever. It's the same thing. You're spending all this money to have, to have regular people in there. And as Mr. Hinsley said, there is nothing in the contract. All it says is you're a high school graduate. You're a high school graduate. You have no law enforcement ability. You have no law enforcement history on your side. What, it makes no sense to me at all. Okay, you have an armed, an armed officer in there, they can monitor the entry points, the exit points, they can intervene in, in a conflict before it escalates. Here, you're wasting minutes, seconds, a long time. Armed people are trained. These people have no training whatsoever. They know nothing about the way the school operates, they know nothing about, about law enforcement. You're just bringing hall monitors in. It's just such a waste of, of time and money to me. Also, are you really giving people peace of mind with unarmed people? You give, you give peace of mind to parents, to staff, you give security knowing that there's an armed person here, right here, that will step forward and do something when you have an armed with somebody that, that's ready to, to attack. So I do not believe that this is any additional layer of security whatsoever. I'm totally against this. There are so many ways that we could hire private police people, police officers, they have these organizations. What, what are we doing looking at security people with no uniforms, no training, no armed weapons? That's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Mr. Benway?
Subsequent to our, our meeting, our safety meeting a couple of weeks ago, I, I thought it was important to put my thoughts down in, in writing and deliver them to this board. I'd like to start out by addressing some of these multifaceted, multifaceted problems set, if you will, that we have. As we speak, many of our schools are unprotected by armed law enforcement. Security postures in our schools must be threat-driven. Our changed threat environment now includes countless alien actors of, of fighting age and motivation as well as violent anarchists and gender ideologues. Our current SRO force is invaluable, but SRO recruiting shortfalls historically are multifaceted and exacerbated by North Carolina legislative constraints that hinder recruitment. Pay and benefits rank high among the problem areas. Solving this longstanding gap in law enforcement requires a comprehensive, whole-of-government solution for Moore County that defines the threat and outlines the necessary organization, training, materials, leadership, personnel, and facilities to be resourced and integrated to protect our students and staff every school day. Unarmed security contractors cannot provide the required level of protection. And finally, the corrosive vitriol, misinformation, and confusion that this Moore County problem finds on social media and the radio, and the radio hinder problem solving. Reconsidered motion to this problem might look like, in the short term, immediately fill the existing security gap at our, at each school without daily, without daily earned law enforcement with Moore County law enforcement assets in whatever combination and sequence is deemed appropriate. An unarmed security remedy is inadequate to meet the immediacy of armed response demanded of an active shooter or lethal attacker, or lethal attacker scenario. On an expedited basis, in partnership with Moore County On an expedited basis, in partnership with Moore County Commissioners and the Sheriff, establish a contract with appropriate law enforcement agencies to supplement today's armed SRO police force. In the near term, establish a school security council consisting of the Moore County School Board of Education, the Superintendent, the Moore County Commissioners, the Sheriff, and our Moore County elected North Carolina legislative representatives to shape, legislate, resource, institutionalize, and implement a whole-of-government solution to our public schools' security needs. And that's my statement. And I hope we can follow up on this and be glad to parse it as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benway. Dr. Dahl, Mr. Johnson.
You sure?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
I truly appreciate the work that Dr. Locklear has brought forth with this and Chief Gooch of trying to enhance security and being proactive about it. You know, that's the bottom line of what this proposition was all about, is how are we enhancing the security? How are we seeing a problem and how are we trying to do something to try to solve it? So I very much appreciate that. I want to say, first of all, that our SROs are extremely invaluable. I really, they are extremely professional and the root problem here is that, is something that's shared with a lot of areas, is that it's hard to recruit good school resource officers in this particular climate, especially with the pay and the benefits that we have. And so I just want to make sure that I say that right off the bat. I am not in favor of this particular solution because I believe that all of our resources and all of our materials should be going towards enhancing that resource officer position and finding the resources and materials to make sure that we can do this right. I had some concerns of the initial presentation when this was given. I relayed those concerns to Dr. Locklear, Dr. Calcutt. I've gone back and forth with those concerns because I do believe that this is a proactive measure, but I don't believe that the cost of this measure impacts the root problem of armed security in our schools. And I'll just also say, as a parent of daughters that goes to our schools every day, this is extremely important to me and it makes me a little bit queasy to be talking about it so much in public session. And so this type of work that Mr. Benway is describing, this whole-of-government solution of how we can bring resources together, I would, I would offer that we should do that in an extended closed session where we bring these folks together, we talk about the threat, we talk about the problem, and we really hash out some solutions that we can then present to the public. Not to keep this as a transparency, we need to make sure it's transparent, but I believe this topic is important enough and personal enough that we need to make sure that for the security of our kids that we do this and we can have the ability to really connect in a closed environment. So with that, I'll just say that, that again, I appreciate the thought and the proposition of this, but the resources that we're looking to do, I don't believe that unarmed is the solution and I believe that we should put all our resources towards the solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hensley.
I have a few things, yes. So first, let me start out by saying it's very unfortunate that four of the members, Dahl, Calcutt, Davis, and Johnson, refused to open this important topic up beyond the 10 minutes because I have some very valid questions that now all I can do is read the questions because they didn't allow for us to have discussions. So I'm gonna read off some questions here that I'd hoped that we could discuss, but they're just gonna go unanswered and there's gonna be a vote with these questions never being answered, never publicly being answered. So first, let me say that it's worth noting that not only did the chair take this off of the, a month ago, a month ago's business meeting and refer it to a committee, this wasn't even discussed, and then this wasn't even discussed in the work session, right? I said earlier that they don't want this discussed. This is, so they took it off the agenda, they put it on a committee, they didn't discuss it in the work session, it went right to this meeting with no discussion or debate. And it's worth noting that there's not even a presentation. The central office is making a decision and wants the school board to vote on it and they didn't even give a presentation on this issue. Isn't that interesting? The superintendent says that he wants an armed guard in all of our schools. That's very disingenuous because that could be very easily happened if we would give up this false hope of Moore County Schools ever being able to fully staff the Moore County School Police. If the superintendent was serious about wanting an armed officer in every school, the solution is to join the 99% of other school districts in North Carolina, turn it over to the sheriff like Lee County and they have 100% coverage in their schools. That could happen like that, but for some reason, they stubbornly cling to having these And oddly enough, we failed to fill, failed, we have failed to field an adequate force for 15 years. We are the most vulnerable school district. I called three school districts around here. We are the most vulnerable school districts of the neighboring ones and we have the children of some of the most elite special operational forces in our schools and yet we want to pussyfoot around and cling to keeping our SROs, but that's not the issue. The real issue is a $344,000 no-bid contract and its appearance of impropriety. Oh, by the way, to Mr. Johnson's thing about pay and benefits, the inability to recruit SROs has nothing to do with pay and benefits. There are 10 sworn departments in this county. We're the third highest paid and we contribute 24.7% of their money to a fully funded, invested retirement program. It has nothing to do with pay. Anyway, so what this board's about to do is award a $344,000 no-bid contract to a company out of Greenville that has no prior experience with school security, but they do have on its staff the final, the previous Pinehurst Chief of Police. Isn't that interesting? During the September work session, retired Chief Phipps stated he was already interviewing candidates for this position. Think about that. No-bid contract, company with zero experience, and they were already interviewing people. You know, I got questions about this. Unfortunately, I can't ask them because I got 10 minutes. So here are some questions. This great committee that was formed, I think it was her, her, and him, did they ask any of these questions? What's the past performance of this company? Do they get past performance references? Did they look at alternative companies? Maybe look at a private security company that is, actually has past performance in this space? The contract, these officers, these, these whatever, security, unarmed security guards, there's no requirement that they be former law enforcement. Did the committee look at making that a requirement in the contract? It's law enforcement experience preferred. In fact, the only hard requirement is a lifting like 40 pounds, be able to stand on their feet and be a high school graduate. Law enforcement experience is optional. The committee didn't make that a requirement. I've heard, for the five years I've been on this school board, I've heard SROs are highly trained and they have to have special training. We can't get by without that. But yet, the committee did not make that a requirement in the contract. There's no requirement that these patrol, whatever they're called, attend any SRO training, which they could do online. I'm concerned about potential liability to Moore County Schools. You know, we discussed that in closed session, but I think there's some serious liability questions for Moore County Schools. What about a trauma medical requirement? The committee didn't add a trauma, you know, these officers should be trained in delivering trauma aid in case there is a school shooting. Absolutely nothing from that on the committee. I'm just kinda wondering what this committee did. $32 an hour, that's the contract. That is $66,560 a year for an unarmed officer. Let me say that again. That's $66,560 for unarmed officers. What do we pay our starting, highly-trained, actual law enforcement SROs? We're gonna pay, you know, we're gonna pay $66,000 a year for these people. Did the committee look at that? Can they even tell me how much $32 an hour is annualized? They talked about in the contract, standing up a command center. No one asked the question, where's this command center's gonna be located and what exactly, well, I mean, maybe I kinda know its purpose, but no one knows where this command center is they're gonna stand up. The contract says six guards, six guards. My understanding is we have 13 schools uncovered, so we're gonna do six schools for 344,000 and 13 schools would be 3/4 of a million dollars. So this is, this is gonna still leave seven of our schools uncovered. The North Carolina Protection Group made a statement online in response to a citizen. I'll read it. Unfortunately, there's a seven-day rule, so I can't have this up on the overhead, where the North Carolina Protection Group says it's currently illegal to have armed security guards on school property. That should be changing in January and when it does, we will look at allowing clients that option as well. That's the people we're hiring that says they believe the law's gonna change in January and they will be able to, I mean, I don't know whether that's true or not, but you know, it kinda makes me wonder if there's like, has been other discussions about this no-bid $344,000 contract with a company that has no prior experience doing this. So unfortunately, we can't have discussions and none of these questions will be answered because I would really like to know about the potential liability. I'd really like to know what, you know, our officers think about paying these mall cops, you know, the company that provides them $66,000 a year. I'd like to know about, you know, maybe we do put a trauma medical training. Unfortunately, I wasn't on that committee, so I wasn't able to answer, ask any of these questions. This wasn't covered in the work session, so no one was able to ask any of these questions and no one else on this board will ask these questions. And these are important and because, you know, her, 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 and him voted not to suspend the 10-minute rule, you guys will never have the answers to most of these questions. I would like to make a motion. I move to amend the motion by adding the requirement that school board meetings will be covered by these unarmed officers, not sworn and armed police. Could I get a second?
You're out of order, Mr. Hensley.
I made a motion to modify. How is that out of order?
It's my job to ask for the second.
Oh, okay. I got a little carried away.
Yes, you did.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, that's no problem. So, we have a motion on the table. Mr. Schwartz, do you have any comments about this?
What was the motion?
I made a mo, well, unfortunately, I have 10 minutes, so I gotta talk like in hyperspeed.
Well, we don't have, we haven't hired anybody yet, so.
So, I move to amend the motion by adding the requirement that school board meetings be covered by these unarmed officers, not sworn and armed police, like we have two gentlemen here this evening who are armed and sworn.
So.
That's not germane to the main motion.
No, it's just.
No, it is. How is that not germane?
We have to hire them.
No, no, that's absolutely germane.
Is this?
What do you mean that's not germane? I could, that's.
The main motion is to approve the contract.
And I'm making, and I'm making a motion.
You're making a motion to amend the, to change how you have security at the board meetings.
But it's directly related to this. Okay, I make a motion that we modify the contract to state that it covers, to cover Moore County School Board of Education meetings, that they provide service for Moore County School Board of Education.
So you're saying we need to hire them?
I'm saying if we're gonna hire them, that, yes, I'm adding it to, I'm modifying the motion that if we're gonna hire them, that we're gonna modify the contract that they, unarmed officers with no arrest authority, protect our school board meetings. Yes, I make a motion that we modify the contract.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz, is that legitimate?
Well, you're the chair.
I know, I'm thinking about it. I'm consulting our board attorney. That's my right to do that.
That's a motion to amend the contract is germane, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
So, as a maker of a motion, I get to speak first and I also get a second round, so I will just go ahead and make my points. So, school board meetings should not be protected any more than the least of our schools. In fact, unbeknownst to me, I had no idea that there were 13 schools unprotected by armed SROs. I was always led to believe that it was only five or six and then I go on the Moore County School website and it says we have 12 officers and I do the math, I'm like, wow, we have 13 schools on. And it really disturbs me because we would sit here in school board meetings, sometimes there were six or eight officers. You guys remember those crazy days? And, you know, those, we had eight officers at one point, seven anyway, protecting a school board meeting when we had 13 schools with zero protection. So I think that it's absolutely appropriate as a board that we have the same level of protection, the same minimal level of protection that we are voting to provide for our schools. It's only fair. The other point that I would make is, and this was something that Ms. Dahl brought up one time when she was up there speaking before she was on the board, she made a point that, that, she was not correct about this, but she stated that our officers got overtime. They don't. We clarified that. Our officers get comp time. So when there were eight officers in a school board meeting that lasted four hours, five hours, say it lasted five hours, eight officers, those were 40 hours that our schools were not covered. And I think it's absolutely ridiculous that the board members would sit here and insist on armed officers with arrest powers when, you know, we're providing unarmed security for our elementary schools and seven other schools with no security, when the easy answer is just turn it over to the sheriff. Sheriff has no problem, can recruit people. Lee County does it. Hope County does it.
Ready for a vote on the motion?
Okay.
I am not prepared to vote for that motion this evening. I would want to consider it and gather information that I'm not able to do in this timeframe or while I'm sitting here. The motion to amend the contract.
Two.
Are we going to vote on this or not?
We're supposed to vote on it.
The motion on the floor is to amend the contract to require unarmed guards at the board of education meetings.
And Dr. Dahl says she's not.
In lieu of armed officers so that they can spend their time protecting our faculty, staff, and students at the school. I have no fear about my fellow citizens.
Well, wait, shouldn't we, shouldn't we vote on this and then vote on that?
We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment.
Yes, we're discussing and voting the amendment.
Yes, we're voting on amendment to the contract that.
That we have not approved.
We have not approved.
Okay, but should we, should, makes perfect, yeah, it's kinda confusing, isn't it?
I see, I see your point, yeah. So if, why would we make a motion to change how we run our board meetings if we don't have a contract in place with the folks that would be doing the work of the motion? So for that reason, I'm gonna personally vote no against this and if we want to revisit it, if this contract goes forward, we can revisit it then.
Okay.
Why not, why not, why not do it now? I mean, why not modify the contract that they'll provide the unarmed security for our school board? We can certainly do that. Shoot, I should make a motion to add, I'm gonna make a bunch of motions. I'm gonna make a motion that we add trauma medical requirement. I'm gonna make a motion that, that we add, that we require law enforcement experience, not make an option.
Madam Chair, there's one motion on the floor right now.
Yeah, sorry, yep. At this time, let's call for a vote for Mr. Hensley's motion. We've had a motion by Mr. Hensley to alter the contract that is not even in place. We don't know if we're gonna hire these folks, but if it is, if they are hired, that we would alter their contract to add them as a possible source of protection for our board meetings. Okay?
Okay, now I understand.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So, but you're right, Ms. Bruno, we have not approved that.
Excuse me, as I understand, the motion is to amend the contract.
Amend the contract.
To add unarmed guards at the board meeting in lieu of the SROs.
Madam Chair, I don't understand your consternation.
I mean, what, the, the, the.
We're ready for our vote.
No, no, I understand, but we're still discussing this.
Well, no, we're not. We're ready for our vote.
No, I, we haven't used my 10, I've not used my 10 minutes.
Pretty much did.
No, I, no, I haven't, pretty much.
The 10 minutes is in one, it's not a total of 10 minutes, it's up to 10 minutes and then when you.
Except we've had round twos. There's round two. Everyone gets round one. Robert's rule says everybody gets a round one, and then there's a round two, so we're moving on to round two.
All right, you have three minutes.
So, my question is to you. You have consternation about my motion and the process. The motion, the presentation is to, is to vote on a contract. The proper way to modify the contract is to make a motion. I'm actually doing the correct thing. Let's say, let's say there was something in the contract you disagreed with, then what you should do is you should make a motion to modify the contract. Maybe you want them all to be left-handed. You make a motion to do that, and then you discuss and debate. That's the correct thing to do. But what you're saying is, or what you were alluding to, is it should just be a take it or leave it, and we shouldn't be a deliberative body and like, actually say, gosh, no, this isn't right. I think we should do this. You know, we should change it. That's, that's absolutely the correct process. It's kind of bizarre that you don't feel that way.
The motion's ready before the floor.
Can we read, I'm sorry?
Okay.
Go ahead and respond. I just want the motion to be read again before we vote on it in its entirety.
All right, Dr. Dahl.
I have some, the, the, the idea of if we're gonna have security guards, having them here actually appeals to me. As I said, I'm not ready to commit to it this evening, but as I sit here and think about it, I don't think the contract with the security company is the place for it. I think, if anything, it belongs in a board policy. We either hire the security guards or we don't. If we hire them, then we can make decisions about where they're gonna be stationed, and we could very well decide that they should be stationed here, that we should make a statement before the public that, you know, we are the equals of our students, that we are not exceptional. However, I don't think the contract is the place for that. I think that, to me, that seems like a, either a staff decision or a board policy. The contract is, you know, that they're gonna do what Chief Gooch tells them to do, and the superintendent. And if, so if through us, these guys assign them to cover board meetings, then so be it. But I don't see how it belongs in the contract.
Ms. Davis, your request was to state the motion.
Just to state the motion again clearly.
Mr. Schwartz.
The motion is to amend the contract to add unarmed guards at the board meeting in lieu of SROs.
Okay. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. It was five to...
Fails two to five.
Fails. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we modify Exhibit B of the contract to, to make prior experience in law enforcement a requirement. So, Charlie, if you could pull up the contract, please, and go to the, go to the second to the last page on Exhibit B, where it lists the minimum qualification of the, of the unarmed security personnel. It's in the bottom of the second to the last page. The pages aren't numbered. Right there. So, these are, is that the second to the... Let's see, let me check. Yep, so, so right there are the minimum qualifications, and by the way, the contractor is only required to make the minimum qualifications, nothing more. I mean, they could aspiration, they could promise the world, as they say in the Marine Corps, "Promise the world, deliver Camp Lejeune," right? So, you'll notice up there, "Prior experience in security, law enforcement, or related field preferred." My motion changes that to "Prior experience in law enforcement required." This is the protection of our students, and these people should be, have prior experience in law enforcement training. Law enforcement pe... law enforcement know the law. They know how to de-escalate situations. I've been told forever that, you know, our SROs need to be highly trained, but then we're about to, we're about to approve a contract that doesn't even require law enforcement training, and I don't support that. Law enforcement experience needs to be required, not optional, especially if we're paying them more than we pay our SROs, or we're paying the company that's providing them more than we pay our SROs.
Can, can I ask you to clarify? Are you proposing that we amend that line to change preferred to required?
No, I want to, I want to strike the word "security" or "related field." I want it to read "prior experience law enforcement required." Nope. Law enforcement required.
Question, please. Point of clarification. In order to vote on this, don't we need a best and final offer, a dollar figure proposed by the contractor, based on these additions? I mean, this adds cost to the contract. So, if we're gonna do this, then we have no business voting on it tonight.
Yeah, that's true.
If you approve any amendments to the contract, they can be presented to the potential contractor. If, if the contract's approved with the amendments, they can be presented to the contractor. The contractor can decline it or come back and renegotiate.
But, but part of our deliberation is the cost factor, so we ought to know what it's gonna cost to add these amendments.
Well, the, unless there's a motion to amend the cost of the contract, the cost of the contract that we're offering to this company would remain the same.
Oh, it would?
Well, if they accept...
If they accept it.
If they accept it.
They accept. All right.
All right, thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, could I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we even talking about amending this, when no matter how much you amend it, they still are not going to be armed? So, this is a waste of time, in my opinion. I'm not voting for this, no matter how much it's amended.
I can answer that.
I tend to agree.
I can, I can...
Ms. Johnson.
I can answer that. I can answer that question. I am not gonna vote for the, for the main amendment, but you know what? If, if it's gonna pass, I want to make sure that even though they're unarmed, and I share your, I share your viewpoint on this, even though they're unarmed, they're at least highly trained and have more higher standards than a GED. Like, literally, they could just hire someone with a GED and has a driver's license and passes a criminal background, and that's who's protecting our elementary schools. That's the way the contract's written.
Okay.
And I'm not sure why this... You know, look, it's very unfortunate that the security, the ad hoc security committee didn't address these in committee. As I said in closed session, I'm not sure what they did, but they didn't address these sort of things. And by the way, I expressed these concerns in the work session two months ago, and they went unaddressed by the, by the safety committee. It's very unfortunate that this wasn't addressed by the committee.
Mr. Johnson.
I was just gonna ask if, and I don't know the answer to this, procedurally, can we, can we vote on the main motion that was brought to the board of the security guard contract with an addendum that says we could revisit the qualifications of the contract at a later date? That way we could...
But why? They're still unarmed. I don't care what qualifications they have.
Because we're about to get about 10 more motions on this contract, and I'm trying to figure out how we can move on, because it doesn't sound like this contract is going to be approved anyway, and I'm trying to figure out how we can be efficient with time.
I'm not sure. I'm scared it is gonna be approved. That's why I want to make the requirements as stringent as we can. And it's very unfortunate these things didn't... I asked to be on the committee, and I would've asked these questions in committee, but you know, I wasn't selected by the chair to be on the committee. It was her, her, and him.
All right, yep.
Thank you for the demagoguery. Thank you.
So...
I'm not sure what you mean by demagoguery, Mr. Benway.
All right.
You weaponized every single...
Okay, guys, we're gonna stop here. Out of order. So, we're all, we, I just said we're out of order. So, Mr. Schwartz, I believe we're ready to vote.
The motion on the floor is to amend the contract at Exhibit B to change the requirements for prior experience to prior law enforcement experience is required.
Okay. So, all those in favor of that motion, let's say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one.
Six to one?
Yes, so...
Wait, wait.
No.
I misunderstood that.
Okay, all right. Say the motion again, please, sir.
The motion is to change the bullet point on Exhibit B regarding prior experience to make prior law enforcement experience a requirement, not preferred. To change that to prior experience in law enforcement is required.
So, okay, so...
I thought I was a demagogue.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, sir.
I would like, thank you. I would like to make a motion that the minimum qualifications are modified, add SRO training as a requirement for these unarmed security guards.
Can we get a recess, please?
Yeah. We need to have a recess at this point. It's getting close to nine o'clock. We'll take a five-minute recess. Call the meeting back into session. Dr. Locklear.
Yeah, Madam Chair, based on the, you know, the content, the conversation, the discussion, and the changes that are being brought to the contract itself, I'm just pulling my recommendation, and perhaps we'll circle back to this at a later time. I'm just pulling my recommendation for this. Appreciate the board's discussion, feedback, and engagement. I appreciate staff's hard work on putting this together. Thank you, Ms. Sine, and thank you, Chief, but I'm pulling, pulling the recommendation this time.
All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We're gonna move on to Item D, network infrastructure, cabling for Westin Elementary, Sandals Farm Life Elementary, Vast Lake View Elementary, and Westmore Elementary. And do we have a motion to approve the network infrastructure cabling for Westin Elementary, Sandals Farm Life, Vast Lake View, and Westmore Elementary? Do we have a motion?
This comes with the superintendent's recommendation.
Yes, sir, it does.
Yes, it comes with my recommendation.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Dahl. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any discussion?
I, I do. I actually pulled this from the, as everyone knows, I pulled this from the consent agenda. I was listening in on the, I was listening in on the work session. I was traveling for business in Eastern Europe. Unfortunately, the, you know, the YouTube's not, not synchronized with the audio, so, you know, I wasn't able to watch the slides. So, Mr. Eklund, thank you for coming and giving this presentation. As you know, IT is near and dear to my heart. I would like for you to pull up the brief real quick that you gave in the work session, or maybe it's attached here, and just run through it a couple of questions. I just have, I think I have a couple of questions for you, but I just need to run through the brief real quick, and I'll let you know when I get to the pertinent parts.
Oh, certainly. So, this was, this was a proposal for the wiring infrastructure at a Westin Elementary, Sandals Farm Life Elementary, Vast Lake View Elementary, and Westmore Elementary. This is because multiple campuses in Moore County Schools have network cabling infrastructure that no longer meets district needs or installation standards. These issue, issues in these, in these sites include temporary copper cabling to new structures instead of buried fiber, network equipment installed in instructional spaces, and cabling using outdated specs. This project will be funded through the FCC E-Rate Category Two funding. That covers 80% of the cost. That covers eighty percent of the cost, and the state O-73 network infrastructure funds, which cover the remaining twenty percent. We're able to leverage those state funds because we go through the state mini-bid process that was generated through the North Carolina School Connectivity Initiative, and that allows us, this to be fully covered without using any district local funds. We submitted a request for bids through the mini-bid process, and ANC Group was the only responsive bidder. I did confirm, we send out bids to over thirty vendors as part of the mini-bid process. They're all state-approved vendors. So, this is able to leverage the remainder of our E-Rate Category Two funds to address these needs at these, at these sites. This would be covered through fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and four cents of the state O-73 fund, and two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighteen cents from the FCC E-Rate funds.
So, there was no topology attached, and I, you know, I'm an IT guy. I'm a computer scientist by training, so I just, I'm trying to understand what you're trying to achieve here. I heard you say, replace cable between buildings with fiber.
That's correct.
So, that'll increase the throughput, reliability, or both?
Well, in some, it, it's throughput and reliability, and in some cases, it's locations where we don't even have infrastructure in place. As an example, Vast Lakeview Elementary, we have no connectivity to the gym there. So, we're not able to, you know, install security cameras or other needs.
So, you're running fiber between buildings?
That's correct.
Okay, I got that. So, you said three things, fiber between buildings. What were the other two things?
Oh, it's actually replacing, in some cases, like if you go to some schools like Sandals Farm Life, you might see a network cabinet in a classroom. And we would remove those and install those in a dedicated, what's called an IDF, In-United Distribution Frame for those network, for that network.
So, are those switches in the classroom running Ethernet to the, to individual work? What, what's the purpose of those switches in the classrooms?
They, they, they would provide connectivity for access points, connectivity, excuse me, for, for video security cameras, connectivity for anything else that would be running off the network, you know, any kind of network equipment that may be there. A lot of, a lot of what we have in the classrooms is now running off of wireless, but we do still have classrooms where there might be a computer plugged in, administrative areas where there's a computer that might be plugged into the network. And certainly, as we've moved to voice-over IP phones throughout the district, they would be connected through the network as well.
Okay. And what was the third thing?
The, the third thing in terms of, oh, I just outdated, outdated wiring specs. Like, in some of the very old buildings, there may be stuff as Cat, Cat Five, even Cat Three cabling that's there. So, we would, we would update it with, with updated Cat Six.
Okay, okay. I just, I didn't understand the, what, what technically you were trying to achieve. You know, I saw all the specifications, but you know, what, what are you trying to do? Okay, that makes sense. I, I, I had a couple of other possible scenarios in my mind, not that I didn't think that's what you were doing. I just wanted to make sure that's not what you were, you know, we were doing.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All right. Seeing no further discussion, do we have, we want to vote that the superintendent's recommendation that the school board consider a motion to approve the network infrastructure cabling for Westin, Sandals Farm Life, Vast Lakeview Elementary, and Westmore Elementary Schools. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're at Item...
Thank you, Kent.
We're at Item E, Personnel Report, Senior Executive Team Contract Extensions. Dr. Locklear?
Yes, this is a part of my recommendation that was on the personnel report to extend the senior executive team members, that some would call them part of, they're, they're the senior leaders of our school district to extend their contracts out to meet the length of my contract. We're very fortunate to have great leaders in these roles, and very fortunate to have them leading Moore County schools. And I think it's very wise for us to continue to commit to that stability in our school district for, for the extent that we can, which is through the length of my contract, which is 2029. So, this comes with my strongest recommendation to the board, and with great gratitude for their work.
All right. Do we have a motion to extend the contracts to meet those as similar as Dr. Locklear, as he described of the senior executive team contract extension? I think I said that, did I say that already? All right. Any discussion?
Second.
We had a second? Sorry. I got lost. And now, discussion?
Yes, I'll discuss.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Having had the privilege of working around some of the senior leadership team, they're outstanding, and a great deal of credit goes to Dr. Locklear for assembling the team. We would, we would not want to lose any of them. They would all, every last one of them, would be very hard to replace. And not only would they be hard to replace, but the, we need to give them the vote of confidence, of letting them know that we believe in them, and we need to, you know, we are here to do the best we possibly can for Moore County schools, and we are more likely to keep our really good people if we offer them this. And so, I support this recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments?
Well, I'll just chime in and say, I completely agree. Just, Dr. Locklear's done a great job assembling this team. They're outstanding individuals, and as a team, they're even better. And so, I would say, completely agree with giving them the stability, and appreciate all the hard work they've done for our school system.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have, I have a few things since I removed this. So, I removed this. So, first of all, a lot of long faces out there. I may know, I may, this was not done to make any judgment on performance, of anyone's performance. This was done for the following reasons. First of all, the, let's look at our teachers. Teachers in Moore, per North Carolina law, teachers are allowed to have a four, for a four-year contract once they get through a little probationary period. By policy, by policy, Moore County Schools only gives them two years at a time. Two years at a time for teachers. Principals are required to be given a four-year contract, but everyone else could be whatever. And I find it offensive that we're going to give the most highly-paid people, our leaders of our, of our schools, four-year contracts that aren't required when we don't do the same for our certified staff and our teachers. We have people here who ran on being pro-teacher, but yet, they, they do this kind of stuff. You know, if they're going to do this, they should do the same for teachers. The, you know, let's talk about the contracts for a bit. You know, we, we sign a four-year contract, but oddly enough, the recipients of those contracts can quit with very little notice. So, you know, it's not like it's a reciprocal. Maybe I would do a four-year, I would be all four extending contracts out four years if we got something in return, for example, administrators saying they would give one year's notice for resignation. But, you know, this is a completely a one-way street. The next thing is, this ties the hands of future school boards. Continually extending the superintendent's contract and his primary staff ties the hands of future school boards. Maybe another school board gets in and says, you know, time for some change, but they've tied our hands, and I'm not so sure that that's not one of the motives here, too. I'm, actually, I pointed this out for five years till I'm blue in the face. You know, the highest-paid people in, in this, in this school district get all these benefits. I mean, they, they get meals, like tonight, meals, meals here. You know, we don't feed our teachers. You know, water, there's bottled water provided. And the other point that I would make, and this is very important, and again, I'm not making any judgment about the quality of any of these people, but I've heard, oh, they're doing a great job. Oh, my God, it's great. I've never seen better. Two of the people whose contracts we're extending to four years have been on the job for less than a year. Less than a year. Not, not even that, maybe not even six months. Two of the people's contracts that you guys are probably going to vote to extend to four years have been in their current positions. I don't even have, you know who I'm talking about, right? Have they even had a performance evaluation?
There's a long history of past performance.
Right. But in their current, right, I understand.
Can I answer the question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Neither one of those folks have had issues with performance and the longevity. They're great, great employees in Moore County Schools.
Okay. So, neither one of them had any issues in the past?
I said, neither one of them had any issues that, that in the longevity of their careers. Everybody makes mistakes and have things. You probably can find that in my profile.
No, no. I, I make mistakes all the time. So...
Yeah. But these are, these are valued employees of our school district.
I understand.
And neither one of them are new commodities to Moore County Schools. We, we know well their leadership, their qualities, their characteristics, and their ethics. And I think that's the kind of people we want to keep and show a commitment to in Moore County Schools.
Have, have those two people had evaluations in their current positions that we're extending?
Their current positions this year, no?
Okay. Thank you. All right. That, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. I want to reiterate what Dr. Doll and Mr. Johnson said, and that these are top-of-the-line people. We are seventh in the state of North Carolina for grade level proficiency. This adds to the value of our staff with commitment and unity, that we are saying to them that we believe in you, you're doing good work, and we want to keep you for a long time. So, keep doing the good work. We believe in you, and that's what this says. So, I'm glad I had the opportunity to say it tonight in public. Thank you, Dr. Locklear, for making this recommendation. All right. We're ready to vote. All in favor of this recommendation from the superintendent of Moore County Schools, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion passes. Five? No, six, one.
Did you vote, Pauline?
No.
Oh, oh, you were a no?
I just don't think it's fair.
Okay. Did we say, was it? So, it's four, three? Four, three, sorry.
Oh, not voting is a no.
Okay. Thank you. We are ready for Item Eight.
Not voting is a yes.
It's a yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
If you, if you're not...
So, who voted?
Did you vote, Pauline, or not?
Yes, I voted no.
Okay.
So, four, three.
Four to three.
Four to three. Thank you. So, we're at Item Eight, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank our staff for their work and commitment to tonight's meeting, our tech staff, our school police who are here. Just want to thank them, our other staff that came for items that were on the action agenda. I just want to thank them for their hard work and preparation, and I'm very grateful. No other comments. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We're at Item Nine, Board Comments. I'll start. Mr. Benway, nothing tonight? Okay. Ms. Brenner? All right. Dr. Doll?
I want to correct the record on one thing that was said about me. I addressed the previous board at one time and spoke about the SROs and mentioned that they were serving and getting comp time, which is not being paid for being here. And then, in addition to that, I want to reiterate what I said last week at the work session, in case there's somebody listening to this who wasn't listening last week. Moore County, teachers, students, parents, support staff, central office staff, fantastic job in twenty-four, twenty-five. I'm so happy to be part of this district and so proud of what you have achieved.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hensley?
So, I traditionally don't say anything in the closing comments, but I got a few things here this evening. So, someone mentioned teacher supplements earlier, and hopefully, the county commissioners will vote to give teacher supplements. That's not how that works. The Moore County School Board gives teacher supplements. For the last three years, I've been asking that Moore County Schools revisit teacher supplements, but this board, the previous two chairs have not brought that up. We have people who've run for election saying they're for the teachers, they're for the teachers, they're here for the teachers, but not one of them has spoke up, as I have, and said, it's absolutely crazy that we have not looked at giving supplements to our teachers. We have plenty of money to do it. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll post a chart later on this week showing the increase, the, you know, the, the level enrollment, the very, very small pay increases from the state, and the significant increase in our budget. That money's going somewhere, and there's lots of unfilled positions. We're getting two and a half million dollars in free money from the, the innovative high school for students we don't have to educate. There's money to give these supplements, but for some reason, you know, it just doesn't happen. So, I just want to clarify that, that we, the board, control that, and if we really looked at the budget, I am quite sure we could find money. My second issue is Vice Chair Davis is once again insult to the citizens of Moore County. Several months ago, she accused Mr. LaSaffio of lying, like, right here, accused him of lying when he was actually telling the truth, and said that speakers were... Madam Chair, I, I am, oh, okay. Let, let, let me, okay. So, the person who shall not be named said that members of the public were tearing down teachers when the members of the public were not tearing anyone down. They were positive, and they were trying to defend, you know, book reports. They were trying to uphold standards, and somehow, that was turned around and jammed in their eyes, tearing them down. And then, tonight, this person stated that people were talking trash about the BOE.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, you're not the chair, Ms. Doll?
I can raise a point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said out of order. Okay. You know, I, I, pub, closing comments have never been interrupted.
My, my point of order is that my colleague continues to refer to another person here in a derogatory manner, and that is out of order, according to Robert's rules.
And it's against board ethics and policy.
That, that's not correct.
So, please, please talk about...
That's not correct. All I'm doing is I'm recounting things that the vice chair did. So, if you would just let me finish.
Well, you're doing it again, Mr. Hensley.
For the record, I don't mind if Mr. Hensley speaks. I appreciate your support. If Mr. Hensley can say whatever he wants.
So, then, the vice chair who represents the board, this evening, said that people were talking trash of the BOE, which was not true. I didn't hear a single speaker talking trash of the BOE. I heard him talk, expressing concern about their community. Then she said that they were being rude. I saw no one being rude. I saw the, the speakers being, being respectful. But for some reason, you know, they're tearing down, they're talking trash, and they're being rude, when none of that happened. It didn't happen two months ago, and it didn't happen tonight. The other thing is, I rarely read prepared statements, but I wrote this when I was over in Eastern Europe, right after the end of the work session, when Mr. Benway took the... What's amazing is how prophetic, not pathetic, how prophetic this was, prophetic. I wrote this a week ago. "Mr. Benway, once again, took the occasion, my absence, to read a prepared statement bashing me. The first time, of course, was a special meeting they called to censor me, but only after ensuring I couldn't be present that day."
Point of order. Same complaint as before.
Mr. Hensley, you're out of order. Just stop.
I'm sure.
Talking about board members or other employees of Moore County Schools.
Well, so, so here's my, here's my point. Mr. Benway, last week, Mr., no, no, no.
Mr. Schwartz, what's that policy?
Hear, hear me out. Hear me out, Madam Chair. Mr. Benway...
About calling out names of board members.
That happened last week under your tutelage. Mr. Benway read a memorandum for the record that you supported that said, "I engaged in demagoguery on the radio and social media." You allowed that.
He did not call your name.
Okay. So, I'll leave Mr. Benway's name out of this.
He didn't call anybody's name.
He...
He said it in general. He didn't call anybody's name, and you are, so please stop.
Okay. Okay. So, let me, let me finish. Let me finish. I will leave it out. So, I would say that the word demagoguery, you know, the, the objection was apparently that I go to social media to, to, to educate the public on items. In this case, it was SROs and the lack of security in our schools. But I would suggest, and this was the prophetic part, I would suggest that I wouldn't have to do those sort of things if the chair allowed public discussion, deliberation, debate on things. Instead, presentations aren't allowed based upon, you know, disagreement of the content. Things are unilaterally removed from the agenda, and things are referred to committee. And, you know, if we engaged, and, and we saw it this evening, that's why I'm saying it's prophetic. I wrote this a week ago, and, and I was saying that if public discussion, debate, and deliberations was allow, actually allowed, and people engaged in it in the school board, then perhaps school board members wouldn't have to go to social media, wouldn't have to go to the radio to educate the public, because we would actually do it the way it's supposed to be done, and that's have deliberation and debate. Mr. Johnson said that he's been communicating with you guys... Mr. Johnson said that he's been communicating with you guys offline about concerns that he had with the, with the security. Those should have been aired in the public, so the public hears those discussions and debate. But instead, nobody wants to have public discussions and debate and deliberations. And Robert's Rule says, we are a deliberative body, and I will submit that this body does everything they can to avoid public discussion and deliberations. That's it, thank you. That wasn't so painful.
It was a little bit. I have no further comments.
Ms. Davis?
I am so proud to be the vice chair of Moore County Schools, and I'm proud of the hard work that our staff, and that our chair and Mr. Doctor Locklear does. And I don't know what demagoguery is, it's probably a political word, but I'm not a political person. But the trash talking, and the tearing down, and the demagoguery that goes on within or without these walls is disgusting. And the misinformation that is put on social media, because it is truly misinformation, whenever we can have these discussions in our business meetings, where we are conducting ourselves as professionals, and everything is out in the open for everyone to see, that's when we're functioning the very best. And that's what I'm thankful and proud that we do, because my eyes have been opened to how honest and how wonderful Moore County Schools' system is. And, and we will all make our own fair share of mistakes, but as far as being the vice chair of Moore County Schools, I couldn't be prouder. And I thank y'all all for your time and energies that you've put in toward today and other days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. No, you're, oh, go right ahead.
I'm so sorry, I do have one more thing. Just to point out, I'm sorry, I don't normally do it, but I will take this opportunity that Mr. Hensley actually did put something on Facebook about my daughter being at a particular school with two SROs, and it's not even the school that she attends. So that's a point of, just a direct example of where misinformation goes on social media, and it has no business there.
It is late, but this is public meeting, so I'm going to take the time. I want to thank our board members and staff for a productive meeting tonight. Thank you to our student leaders that were here tonight, leading us in the pledge and for inspiring us. Congratulations to those recognized tonight for their outstanding service to our school district. We are hoping to secure a date to meet with our board of commissioners near the end of October. I thank our public attendees tonight for being here. Some board members and the superintendent, deputy superintendent attended a beautiful tribute concert and piano dedication at Pinecrest High School last week. It was a fitting tribute accompanied by a long-lasting gift of a grand piano in memory of Sheila Criswell, a thirty-five-year-long employee. She's a Pinecr- she was a Pinecrest graduate and Aberdeen resident. It was provided by First Bank of Southern Pines. I want to thank First Bank and music director Michael Martin, as well as the students and community members who contributed to that beautiful concert. Moore County Schools sets the example in the state and the nation as the first and best choice in education, as evidenced by the twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five state accountability data presented last Monday at our work session. Moore County Schools ranked seventh out of one hundred and fifteen school districts in the state for grade level proficiency, and has received many additional accolades. I encourage you to view the October sixth video in minutes for more information. We, the board, celebrate and applaud the students, teachers, staff, and family members of Moore County Schools, and thank you to our community members who volunteered and provided support for our schools. Also, last Thursday afternoon, Mrs. Davis and I were honored to attend the twenty-twenty-six A. Craig Phillips, North Carolina Superintendent of the Year Award Banquet in Greensboro. Our superintendent, Dr. Tim Locklear, was recognized as one of the top eight superintendents out of one hundred and fifteen in the state of North Carolina. This is a significant achievement for Dr. Locklear and for Moore County Schools. This doesn't just happen, and I want to take a moment to congratulate him and to recognize the leadership skills, enthusiasm, exemplary knowledge of Dr. Locklear as he lifts the Moore County Schools' way, and pause for one minute to contemplate that he works with seven board of education members, approximately eighteen hundred employees, thirteen thousand students, numerous local and state elected officials, community groups, and citizens of Moore County. Moore County Schools has risen from thirty-seventh in twenty-eighteen to seventh in twenty-twenty-five in school accountability measures, and more than that. We are very grateful and thankful to Dr. Locklear and his team for their dedication to our students. Thank you. Now, with that being said, we're at adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much, have a safe drive home.